Together, but not until sixth.
Recording in progress.
So they come home late. Friends. Because she was there after school.
She's helping them.
Right.
All the kids are doing the same thing. You know, it's like having when you're like one.
They don't want.
They're like entertaining. You have them, you're like, OK, they're just like, they're happy and like all together.
And we're lucky that the grain is like the kid that everybody wants to that house. We're like, oh, good. Thanks for helping out.
That is.
Change it right that way.
Don't worry, you'll get your chance. It'll it'll come full circle.
Yeah.
Are we broadcasting?
Yeah.
Recording? Okay, we're already on. All right, good evening, everybody. Let's get this party started. I'd like to call to order the Town Superior Board of Trustees Work Session for Monday, December 16th, 2024. Up first, we've got dinner with the downtown Superior Metropolitan District Board. So welcome. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. Why don't we just go around the table and do introductions? I am Mark Lasis, I'm the mayor.
Jim Brostovich, SDC One, Two, and Three Board.
I'm Peggy Ripka. I'm the district manager for all three communities, districts.
Terry Willis, also on the board.
Jason Serbo, Mayor Protop.
Mike Foster, town council member.
Not yet. You're a town trustee.
Town council member.
Jen Cowish, trustee.
Jeffrey Weathers, I'm a board member for the District, District One.
Neil Shaw, town trustee.
Anthony Harrigan, Metro District Board One.
Heather Freycraft, trustee.
Maggie Miller, trustee.
Michelle Ortner, community manager for Metro District.
All right, great. Well, thanks, everybody, for taking the time to meet with us. I know that there's a lot of things that the Metro District is responsible for that we get questions directed towards the town board. And we have to say, well, that's really the Metro District that you need to talk to. So we appreciate you taking the time to meet with us so we can make sure that we're just working together, we're aligned on the issues, and we're informed. So I know that we've got an informal agenda.
Yeah, I just listed some possible topics for discussion. And we can go, I can go from the top down.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay. There were some questions about how frequent the district board meets and how they're publicized to residents. Because we get questions from residents every time.
So the districts at this point are scheduled to meet, excuse me, only once a year. It's a money-saving thing. And quite frankly, that's how we can conduct business. Typically, districts, districts one and three. And actually, it might be, I did a small PowerPoint to kind of go over what the districts are. And as I go into this explanation, it will be much easier with this, with something. Yeah.
So you're wearing like a totally different hat than yours.
Sat.
I don't have a lot of.
I thought yours was like.
Like, whatever. Sit where I want.
She is on the Zoom as a true under.
Oh, it's on.
See it over here?
Yes.
Oh, it's on everybody's.
Yeah.
So anybody who's logged into Zoom can see it.
Are there people on Zoom?
We've got Ted Cheek and Brad Walker as attendees, and then six panelists.
Sorry, without Zoom, we couldn't work to share it.
Oh, here.
Yeah. Well, no.
Your location?
Well, because I'm logged in remotely, so this thing's ending like is the problem. I can email it to you.
OK.
Oh, no, it's good, crazy.
Seems like a good idea.
Well, it's still a good idea. It's just going to take some time to execute said good idea. So while, while we're getting this set up, I may just go ahead and start talking if that works for folks. Oh, yeah, I can hear that. Maybe.
If she's on Zoom, can she not share?
OK, it is.
Sorry, she's on Zoom, she's broadcasting.
Oh, there we go. All right, perfect. So thank you for inviting us, first of all. And when I was talking to Jill, we spoke, well, it's actually several times last week, about what was going to happen tonight and the fact that a lot of the folks on the, a lot of the trustees are newer. I wanted to give some background because it is a little bit confusing, even though, for those of us who have been working with it for many years, because it is kind of a unique setup. So. There we go. So the history of the districts and the boundaries. The service plan, so the district originally started in 2013. It was November of 2013, so we really didn't get started, get going with anything official in 20, until 2014. The districts, the community is made up of three individual districts. And I'm going to go into each one a little bit later with what they do and then the boundaries, because that also is, comes into play in a lot of the questions that you may have. And then board qualifications, just to let everyone know, in order to serve on the board, you do have to be, it is a quasi-governmental entity, so it is more of a government than, like, for instance, an HOA. And I think that's a lot of confusion out for the homeowners is they think it's an HOA. It's not, it's a governmental entity. So in order to be qualified, you need to be registered to vote in the state of Colorado. You need to live in the district, and so that can be a tenant or a homeowner. You don't have to be an owner, you just have to physically reside in the district or own property or be under contract to purchase property for which you have to pay taxes. It's a very long explanation. So all of the folks that are at the table that are on the board are fit one of those qualifications. So District One is primarily the residential district. So you met, Jeff and Anthony mentioned that they were the board members for that district. The board members are Jim, Terry, Anthony, and Jeffrey. The funding from the, for the district is, we get some money from SURA, and we also get money from property taxes. All revenue from District One is transferred to District Two. So it's literally an in and out situation. And this is, these are the boundaries of District One. So all of the areas that are highlighted or outlined in bold, those are the areas that are the District One. And if you'll notice, it's all the residential area, except for one little small place right here. Right here. That is the only one residential area that is not in District One. District Two is the operating district. So all of the operations, everything that the districts do goes through District Two. It is, there is a small residential area, which will, it's that one that I was kind of highlighting, but I'll show it on the next slide. The board members are Jim and Terry. Funding is from SURA, and then we also get the transfers from districts one and three. So this is District Two, the small, the areas. So this is basically the sports table around over there. And then this small area that I have circled in red, that is the residential component of District Two. And those are the only homeowners who are eligible to serve on the District Two board live in that specific block. And I will hit that later.
May I interrupt?
Yeah.
Anybody know why that little parcel is District Two?
No.
And it happens to be all residential?
It's, you know what, the answer is no. I've asked the question before. The folks that, that set up the districts in the beginning are really no longer here, so you really can't ask the reasoning. Because if I could, I would ask why District Two is operating and there's no homeowners. But that's.
Jim, did that have originally a function other than residential?
No, it was always residential.
That's all, those are all thrive. Right. Three-story town.
So District Three, the board members are Jim and Terry. Again, funding is from SURA, and we get all revenue transferred to District Two. And so this is the outline of District Three. Transition, I know one of the questions that people typically have is the transition from developer to resident. And a lot of times, these conversations will start as people assuming it is an HOA. In the HOA world, when 25% of the units that may be built are, that are sold to a homeowner, at that point, one member of the board has to be elected by the homeowners. At 50%, two, and then at 75%, the entire board must be elected by homeowners. That's not the case with Metro Districts. It is literally an election every other year. The next election is May of 2025, and anybody who's qualified can run. So for instance, for, in an HOA, I've had some that went, sorry, a year, year and a half, many, many more than that, that they didn't hit that 25 or 50%. So there's one lone homeowner, and the homeowners really don't have a voice. In Metro Districts, if you're qualified, you can run for the board. So I had a community that was, like, they had 30 residents, and they took over the board because they ran at the normal election time. So. And then, so, and again, anyone qualified can run.
In the future, Peggy, who would be qualified for three, since there's no residents?
I don't know.
And what happens if these two gents?
We actually, I'm actually going to talk a little bit about that in a minute, because I agree with you, it's, there's no good answer. So the challenges are the majority of homeowners are in District One. There's a small number of homeowners who are qualified in District Two and no homeowners in District Three, and it's a problem. And we have some thoughts, but we also have some other things that probably we're going to hit first, like budget challenges.
So. Before we move off that, it should also be noted that each district has five seats. So like Districts One, or, yeah, we, it's Terry and I, but we would love more people.
So a lot of vacancies.
Yes.
Yes.
A heavy lift for you.
Yes. So these are the challenges that we see with the board makeup. District operations in general, we do, this is again, anything I talk about, operations is going to be District Two. We do covenant control for the residential areas. Michelle, at the end, is the boots-on-the-ground person. I'm the have meetings, talk to people, and work on resolutions in minutes person. She's the talk to all of the people and get driven crazy by snow removal person. Plaza operations, including the water feature, operations of the medical office building, which those costs are actually split 50-50 with the medical office building. And then landscaping, oh, change, sorry. Landscaping, including along Main Street and snow removal. I know snow removal has been a challenge. I know Michelle met folks on site last week. We've talked, I talked to Jill about the, about the issues last week as well. And we are, the landscaper that we are working with has, is very clear about what the expectations are and to be out to make sure it's cleared kind of continuously. And I know, and actually Jeffrey reached out earlier today that we might have some help from the city or from the town in certain respects of that. So I will talk to you about that later.
OK.
Which is basically just, we have somebody coming out, our contractor isn't on site and isn't necessarily in the area, so it's an expensive endeavor for the district to, to do that. Whereas if there's people who have staff on site or really close, obviously, it's going to be easier and therefore cheaper.
There are opportunities for the town and Metro District to collaborate or share an agreement for snow removal so that you can get better economies of scale and deployment is the same.
I think that's kind of what I'm guessing you were kind of thinking about. So I think that's a conversation that we're going to start, I'm going to say, tomorrow. So we can explore that, because it does make sense. I mean, there is a lot of entities working in the same area, so it does make sense to have everyone working together with the same contractor versus, and then you know who to call if there's a problem versus the pointing fingers and, well, this particular sidewalk, this inch is, I'm exaggerating slightly, but this inch was this person's and not this person's, and that kind of thing. So.
One other thing not on your list is, even though we don't operate it, but we are on the garage by Block Six.
Yes.
Main parking garage by the plaza the district owns, on the ground floor. We don't actually actively operate that. That's just a cost-sharing agreement with the district.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim.
Is it, is it going to be a similar relationship with the other garage going up on Block Eight?
The Block Eight garage is going to be completely private.
OK.
The district has no, no participation in that.
There was some discussion about, with Bill James, about two and five, with that parking garage.
Oh, OK.
Using that for events or something.
But not part of the district.
But I don't think that's going to be a, that's not.
That's not a district.
Yeah.
Challenges, funding for the level of snow removal needed for the commercial area, funding for water feature operations, funding in, just in general, is a challenge at this point. 2024 is the last year that the district is going to be receiving funding from the developer. Up until this point, there's been deficit funding, but in, as in the case in any community's lifespan, at some point, the developer, the district has to be self-funded. I mean, we're not, it can't be 50 years later and ranch capital is sending us money. So this is the last year, and so our goal moving forward is to make sure that everything is funded by the district.
So what does that going to mean for the property owners in downtown? Are they going to, assessment that's going to be hitting?
Your transition is really good. So one of the challenges that we have is the tax revenue is much less than we originally anticipated way back in the day. And a big portion is that we lost the hotel. And that was a huge chunk of tax income that we are not getting now. And since it's not going to get rebuilt. The district is also limited on its operations mill levy. We have two different mill levies. One is for debt service, which is the bonds. And then the other one is for operations, and we're limited on how much we can assess for operations. And one option is to impose potentially an operations fee and/or administrative fee. This is something that would need town approval. It would be, my understanding, is an amendment to the service plan. The one thing to keep in mind under the note is that the funding concerns should decrease as the remainder of the project is completed. There's some other things, the Life Science Building is up.
Yeah, more, more prominently is the apartments on Block Eight.
So, yeah, we're hoping to have a hotel under construction next year, next to where the element was.
OK.
Block Eight is supposed to start construction in April of next year.
So the issue that we have is the lag between, obviously, the construction and the income. So if, one of the things that we are looking at, and this is a fairly, you know, kind of giving you a warning, we're going to be coming back at some point in the fairly near future, is that we do need to have some sort of help with regards to income. Otherwise, we are not going to be able to meet the expectations of the town, of the homeowners. There is just a, you know, a money issue, a very basic black and white. The good thing with that is it is a, if any fee that we did assess would be a temporary fee, because we have those other things coming online, the apartments, another hotel, at that, once we start getting the tax revenue from that, we would be able to decrease any fees. So it's a kind of a stopgap measure versus a long-term thing. We don't know what that looks like yet, if that's probably going to be the next question. We are working with the district's accountant to do some basic math and figure out what that is going to look like. There's still some unknowns that we are working on. One of them is the operations of the water feature, because in order, the way that it's designed, a lot of the testing has to be very similar, almost to a swimming pool, which is a very not cheap way to do it. Michelle has been working with Craig, who works at the medical office building, to have somebody who's already on site to help with that situation. But it is, there's a reality of, you know, how much it's going to cost versus how much we can actually pay. So that's, that's the upfront challenge. And like I said, I'm going to kind of give you guys the heads up that chances are really good we are going to be coming to the town to request a, some sort of an amendment allowance, literally an allowance for money.
And Peggy, let me interrupt you real quick.
Yeah.
This is anticipating full build-out, right?
What do you?
All the homes you're in are occupied, all the COOs you're issued, the town is done, you're still looking at, you're being in a deficit for the facility management.
We're optimistic that is not the case.
Yeah.
Particularly the, the apartments, the medical, or the life sciences, the hotel, those don't really add any burden to the district. It's basically all income with very little expenditure. And that's really what the accountants have said, it's going, should tip the balance into being self-sufficient.
I just see a lot of, living in downtown, I have a lot of residents coming up to me, the snow removal services seem to be getting worse and worse and worse. We pay much, much higher mill levy than anybody else in the town superior. I want to make sure that they're getting their bang for the buck, and if they do have to pay some sort of a fee on top of it, there's never going to be a question about snow removal. There's never going to be a day where like, well, sorry, your street doesn't get shoveled. Main Street, I think there was an issue before with one of the previous snowfalls where it snowed, nothing was done to shovel it, and these businesses are paying to a very, very high rate to be on Main Street, and they're not getting any sort of infrastructure to take care of their businesses. Can we guarantee this is going to be all encompassing and take care of this, or we will still be nickeling diamonds when we go on?
Our goal, if we do this and when we do this, it will be to come to the town with a, this is a full inclusive, this will address all of the issues, there will be no questions moving forward. As far as snow removal, there's always going to be a challenge, and we're always going to get complaints on snow removal, but the, some of the challenges that we had on Main Street with the, with the commercial areas, absolutely, that is something that when we're, well, ideally, from this point forward, there are no further issues, because we have addressed that with our contractor. And I know that one of the other concerns with some of the homeowners is the, the snow removal in front of their individual units is, and that is something that the district started doing originally and was not supposed to be doing. And so we actually pulled that back last year. And I know that that was not a very popular decision. It's not something that we wanted to do, but that was obviously a huge decrease in our costs. So we're, when it talks, when we're talking about budgeting, and you know, anybody who has worked on a budget should know, you either have the funds or you have to, you can either pay for it or you have to decrease the level of service. We don't want to decrease the level of service, obviously.
I don't think they do either.
Yeah. So I think we're just, like I said, that's why we're going to be coming to the town for that. And again, it is more of a stopgap measure for the next, I want to say, three to five years, if that, because once some of the apartments and the hotel come online, the revenue from that, like Jim said, it's going to be all revenue, and that will help hit that level. And it's not, we don't need a huge amount. It's, it's just enough that we can't do everything that we would like to do, and so we, and that we need to do.
No, that is fair, thank you.
I would like to ensure that there's the right balance of the residents taking on this burden and some of the businesses taking on the burden, and some of the people that use the downtown who aren't residents taking on the burden. Because, you know, the new hotel, for instance, got put in tax District Two. Well, that district pays a smaller levy than I do as a resident. And so the residents pay the highest levy, and so I don't know about putting fees on the residents. I mean, I also don't want to stifle business, but like, you know, I just want to keep options on the table.
No, you bring up a good point. I mean, the reason why we can't get a hotel rebuilt where the element was is because of the tax. I mean, it's a higher rate, and it's, the element guys will basically say, we screwed up and we didn't know the rate was so high. They just badmouth it to no end. So no one wants to buy that lot, because they just keep talking about how high.
Which doesn't help them either.
No, it doesn't. It's like they're, yeah, wait, so who are you complaining to?
A lot of the residents downtown feel the same way. Sealed, I didn't know it was in there.
Right.
Because it was not obvious anywhere that you're paying 70% higher mill levies in Rock Creek, for example.
When, when you come to us with a proposal, you know, we'll want to know, obviously, what the amount is, for how long. But I'd also like to have the developer at the table and see if the developer would be interested in revisiting the cost-sharing agreement, modifying that so they can have some skin in the game as well to share the costs, so it's not just, you know, land on the town's lap, to try to extract us from this problem.
Is the plaza metro, right?
Yes.
I don't, it's, well, it seems like it's more of a park-type setting than Metro District-type. Seems like it's one of those areas where ultimately turnover, but obviously, there's tons and tons of that on both sides. And ultimately, we're residents of both downtown, so either way, I'm paying for it as a resident, but just curious if that's even the topic.
It was a part of the, the district from the beginning planning, so I don't, we've not had any discussions that I'm aware of that would change that. All right. Addressing the challenges to, regarding the Board of Directors.
Get backup over there.
In the short term, we actually, Michelle plus her, went through, got contact information for all of the people in that Thrive Block, and we reached out. And we do have one homeowner who is interested in being appointed to the board, and that is going to happen at the next board meeting. The date is to be determined. We are looking at refunding our bonds, which will also help, and the meeting is going to be scheduled around the needs for that. So I don't have the exact timing, but probably sometime in January. And then that individual would also be able to run for the board of the election in May. So we are reaching out, trying to find people who are interested in serving on District Two Board within that small block.
So that would be ultimately, that one block is the source for all five board members?
The next thing is the long term.
And that's the only operating district.
Yeah.
That's in really concentrated.
The next item, the next, is the long-term plan.
There's really good people in it.
No, I agree with you. I mean, it's, it's, it's not, it's not ideal, it's not good. And Jennifer, who's the district's counsel, has said she doesn't like the setup, we don't like the setup, it's not a good setup, but we have to fix what we have. So the long term that we're looking at is require town support to amend the district's boundaries and/or the service plan. I don't know what that's going to look like. That's literally the extent of our planning. Like I say, here, there's no action that's been taken, because the funding is the primary focus at this time. And once we have that figured out, then we are going to be going on to the amendments that need to happen. There's a couple of different things that we've talked about. One of them is the Community Authority Board, which. things that we've talked about. One of them is the Community Authority Board, which would be like an umbrella over all three districts, potentially like realigning. I don't even know that we can adjust the boundaries, because the bonds are related to the current boundaries. So, we need to look at what the options are for that, and what the best long-term solution is. But we are looking at, ideally, the goal in the long-term is to have all of the homeowners who live in the district be able to be on a board that makes the decisions for the district. So, it's not going to be an easy or...
Like a singular decision-maker district?
Ideally. It's really going to depend on what the options are down the road, and that is not my area of expertise by any stretch.
But can Districts 2 and 3 function with only two, five members?
Yes.
Okay.
I had one board for a long time that had one board member. It made the meetings really easy. There was no discussion.
And coram.
Disagreement.
No disagreement. If there was, it was really awkward. So, a couple of notes of things that Jill had mentioned might come up. One of the things is community artwork. And we had somebody come to the last board meeting for, with a sculpture, and someone has been talking to Michelle as well. As a general, the board is perfectly okay and happy to have artwork installed on district property. The only thing that we're looking for is an easement agreement that would outline ownership and maintenance of the pieces that are installed. So, that's the only thing that's up with that. And short-term rentals, I know this is a hot topic, and it's just a hot topic. The district's documents, governing documents specify that you can have, you cannot have a lease of less than six months. So, no short-term rentals, six months or longer, unless given approval. And I can tell you, over the last several years, the only time that that approval has been given, it's gone to the board several times. The only time it was approved was there was somebody who was displaced by the Marshall Fire, and they asked for like three months while their house was getting rebuilt. Absolutely. Because that's an extenuating circumstance. But that, I know that, and Michelle knows more about the short-term rentals in the community, but that is where we are with SCC. So, if we see them, enforcing it is a bit of a challenge.
I was going to say, they do exist. What are the options for enforcement?
So, we send, it's the same enforcement process as all of the other covenant enforcement. So, we send letters, we can do fines. At a certain point, the board can decide if they want to pursue legal action, which is, I've done that with some covenant issues in the past. The only time I've done that for a short-term rental was, there was a house, the renters had a house party, and there was gunfire, and we contacted the attorney like 6:00 AM on Saturday morning to get that to stop. But obviously, that's an extreme situation. So, because it is a, it is an expensive thing that we have to do. We charge it back to the homeowner eventually, but we have to claim first and get awarded legal fees. So, but if it's something, if somebody is creating a problem, because I know, like my husband and I do Airbnbs all the time, and we're very responsible people, and you don't even know that we're there. But I know that that's not the case for a lot of people. There's a lot of people that go in there, and it is a party situation, and there's lots of challenges and noise issues and trash, and all of the things that go with that. If that is happening, let us know, because then we can start to document that, and then go take that legal action if the board would like to do that.
Probably being responsive, the owners, because I know the lease line I brought to you had a couple dozen reviews. So, it's been operating a while.
That would be a Michelle question, because she's the one who does the enforcement.
So, do they ring a bell?
I mean, I know there's a few of them, and no, they're not very responsive.
So, yeah, I don't know if there's, if we just send them a letter, or if there's next steps that are, if we're proceeding, or if we just send them a letter and we're done, until somebody else complains?
Pretty much, because sometimes it's hard to tell, because there's so many short-term rental websites. There's, you know, VRBO, Airbnb. Sometimes they'll put their, the only way I can find them is if I look at Airbnb's map, and they're within our borders. But some people put the little pin outside on purpose.
I've seen those.
Yeah. So, there's no way for me to know.
Until they show the pictures and the address.
Right.
They show their door.
Right.
And you can see it on the front.
Yeah. Quick question, though, on the short-term rentals, because the town, obviously, adopted an ordinance that would come into force in January 1. Does this mean, when it comes to short-term rentals, there's so many definitions of what it is? You know, so if I have a, if I have a townhouse and I live in it, and I decide to rent out one of the bedrooms, does that fall into your short-term rental?
I want clarification on that, too, because it's something I need to know, because some people, that is how they operate.
Sure.
And I think our rules are more based on like, if you're renting your whole house out.
Whole house, okay.
And so, I don't, I would love that answer.
I think it actually says, like, all or a portion of the house can be less than, can't be less than six months.
Okay.
So...
There you go. And can we have two different rules? The city have one and the Metro?
Our towns, you know, our towns are what they are, but they don't supersede the district. So, the district or the HOA or whomever can have a more restrictive set of rules. And then you have to adhere to the town rules on top of that, which includes licensing and other things, registration.
So, if the town got licensing requests from a downtown, would it be honored?
Denied.
Well, so, I already told Renee that.
Yeah.
[laughing]
Because the first, the first question on there, and I've already had people reaching out to me, the first question on there is, have you adhered to the rules for your neighborhood or HOA or anything else?
They're going to say yes.
They're going to say yes.
Absolutely.
Right? There's only so much the town can do in terms of double-checking, which each organizing body, because there's HOAs, there's town home communities and everything else. It's like...
Well, Renee asked each of us, though, and so, I responded to her with the downtown Superior's information. So, she knows that our...
And our interpretation of these rules, is that board-driven? Because I don't remember being asked.
It was set up in the CCNRs.
Mm-hmm.
Again, Jeff.
But it says...
Before.
You mean the folks that requested?
Right, if they wanted...
I think it was before you were on the board.
Okay.
The last one was the Marshall Fire one.
Okay.
So...
But it would be brought up?
It would be brought to the District 2 Board. Yeah. And this is why...
Even if it's in District 1? Because...
The covenant, because we're the operations district, everything goes through District 2, so...
So, if the town, if they can have a permit?
Yes.
So, if the, is that something that the district could also use, even though we don't have a permit? Before we go to the lawsuit territory, if there's somebody who refuses to do it, can the town find somebody? Or how would the, how could we potentially partner on it?
I think...
I am ready. So, yeah, the town recently adopted short-term rental regulations. One of the requirements is authorization from any applicable HOA. So, we're proactively trying to understand, or anybody subject to covenants, right? So, Renee and my staff is reaching out to all the HOAs. Are you going to allow them? Blanket allow them, blanket deny them, or is it kind of a case-by-case, and those regulations have to marry up? So, if they don't get a license issued by the town, then our own co-enforcement team, you know, can, we, there are provisions in the ordinance for enforcement through the town. So, I would imagine, don't know who will be more proactive, but we'll have an enforcement mechanism. And then, the software that's getting configured actually scrubs all of the websites. So, like Airbnb, VRBO, right? So, it'll track, it'll catch people with listings that pop that aren't licensed.
Yeah. What I saw had a pin in Louisville that she was, that she was referencing. But then when you look at it, it even shows a picture of the front door of...
I don't know how they do it, but they do, like, there's this address identification that's getting configured kind of as we speak, that somehow they can tell if it's in Superior. But they haven't been available yet to us.
Well, in my experience, town enforcement tends to go a little bit faster than district enforcement, because of the opportunities available to the town. Because we do letters, we do fines, and then in order to get to that level, it does have to be an attorney, and it's a demand letter with 30 days. It's not a fast process. So, typically, if we can work with the local...
We'll start with a similar process, right? So, in this, you know, we're also kind of working with town prosecutor to understand, you know, kind of what is the timeframe where you get a warning, and then if you do it again, you get another warning, and then, you know, so... They'll hear from us quickly. The resolution might take some time.
Fair enough.
The town might be more threatening, because I don't know if they've been responsive. Well, they don't...
No, the town is definitely, because all the snow removal things that Jamie sent out, there, I get calls about them all the time. So, the town's much better. They're more scared of the town.
All right. And that is the end of what I had. So, going back to your question of 30 minutes ago, the boards meet about once a year. And like I mentioned, because we are trying to, that's the, let me rephrase that. The only scheduled meeting is once a year, and that's for the budget, or the budget hearing process. We will have meetings throughout the year as needed, but we don't call them unless we have an agenda that is worth the money that we're going to spend on it, if that makes sense. Because it is, it's $4,000 or $5,000 to have a meeting with the preparation, the attendance, the follow-up, you know, all the different tasks that people come away with.
And they are published, right?
They are published. They're put on the district's website.
I think that was a question.
Yes. They're put on the district's website. And then, certain things, like the budget hearing, does have to be published in a publication with general circulation within the district. And I can't remember what it is for Superior, but the budget hearings are in that process, which I don't know who reads the legal section of the pages. But we do it.
It's been a while since I've been on the district website. Is there, can residents get notified? Rather, like, is there like a push notification for a district meeting? Or do you have to, oh, let me see if there's a...
There's not on the website, but if they let us know, we can add them to the list, the distribution list for the meetings.
If you don't go to ask, then you're not going to get notified.
True.
First of all, like a sign-up notification, like the town has, pretty robust. Every time you go onto it, sign up.
We don't have it. Our website is through Sipa, and I think there's actually a way to do that, but we haven't done that yet. We're, right now, we're working on the ADA compliance requirements that is due by the next, by next year. But we will tell people anytime people are, if they ask questions, that kind of thing, we will let them know. We can put them on the distribution list.
Because this is...
You can go to the website, all of those. There's so many other gateways.
Are they searched for? I know you talked about, you know, the potential need to assess a short-term fee. I think, for me, it would be helpful if, when the district comes to the board for that conversation, also walking through other things you've looked at to consolidate districts or refinancing bonds to shave costs wherever you can. Because it's, as it's already pointed out, downtown residents pay the highest bill in the town, and...
Right.
Attacking on another fee is, would be really tough.
In the county?
Yeah.
And how would you collect those fees?
It would go through my office. We have a utility billing program that we would send out invoices.
So, literally an invoice that may or may not get paid. Unlike the county, if you don't pay it, there's repercussions. If they don't pay you, what?
There was actually a change in the state legislature this year that allows metro districts to now, because metro districts or utility districts were able to certify, like sewer fees, water fees, onto property taxes. And up until now, it was only allowed to be that. And moving forward, we can actually certify past due fees and fines. And that's new as of this year. So, but, and then there's a limit, like, you have to be like a certain amount of months delinquent, that kind of thing. The other thing is, we do send delinquency notices. And, I mean, ideally, it would be better if we didn't have to do this. And I think that's agreed by everybody. And if we do it, we will absolutely, we've already looked at cutting costs, changing costs. We've changed a couple contractors to bring down the costs of landscaping and a couple of other things. We've done things internally at my office to make things less expensive. So, we're doing everything that we can. The other conversation that we had with the developer with regards to both the, any potential fee and service point amendment, that they have, were, they're paying for the legal fees for that, because that's not going to be a cheap endeavor either. So, that's a conversation that we've had as well.
Is there any way to utilize parking fees? I know we're collecting parking.
After the first year, we'll start.
Okay. Will the metro district have any, I mean, will they be getting any part of that?
I don't know. I think it's just Carmel and the town.
Okay.
So, they're, they're, yeah, that's interesting, because we're maintaining the commercial snow removal and landscape right on that same road and roads where we're collecting parking fees. So, it seems like that would be an ideal expenditure for those fees.
Well, I think it depends on, like, like I said earlier, we're going to have the conversation about potentially working with everyone. The other thing is, I don't like, and I don't know how you guys feel about this, but I don't like budgeting income based on fees and fines, because you don't know, A, what you're going to get, and it's not a consistent income. So, that, to me, that's a very unstable source of income.
But it's a source of income?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm looking for anything that's going to help the residents not have to have an additional burden of paying the 70% higher bills, and then they've got to kick in mortgage on removal.
Right. I don't disagree. It is a source of income. And I don't know, right now, we're not doing any of the enforcement. So, it's not, doesn't, like, initially, it's not going to be coming to us because of that. It is being paid for by Carmel and the town. So, there's a certain limit to what, I think, makes sense for us to get, because we're not doing the enforcement. Not that I wouldn't be willing to take money from people, but, you know.
What we're doing right now is up to three hours, and then you have to, then you need to get...
Well, it's in most places. Like, we'll see on Main Street, three hours.
Can we do it like Boulder, the second you park, you're paying, right? I mean, do you like to park mobile, you pay, I'm going to park for two hours, and I'm going to pay $5, or whatever it is. And you, and that way, we're getting people right away from the hockey parking, or the people parking in the street for hockey. And it just seems like it's a, it's a much easier way to get revenue. And then, the individuals that live in the units, they get the one permit, so they don't have to get a ticket. But I think a better source of generation is the second that you park there, you're going to start, I mean, the meters run, you're going to pay for that. And then, we, as a town, would do much, much better collecting fees that we could actually use towards things like snow removal, or things like, if the town could take advantage of it.
Boulder has that in their garages, where it's automated when you pull in. Well, I think you still have to scan.
The first time.
The first time, yeah. It's pretty cool. The street parking, I think you still have to do.
Yeah, right away.
More manually on your scan when you come.
What about collecting fees for parking in our garages, since there are...
Yeah, that's what I was...
As a metro district?
We actually had a proposal from Parkwell, I'm going to say, is doing the parking enforcement in Carmel, the Carmel area. But the fee to collect the parking was probably more than we were going to get in income. So, and we don't do enforcement in the medical office building, parking garage. And right now, there's no fee to park there. So, and I don't think it's, it hasn't been neat.
Well, we want them to park there. There's no signage directing anybody there. So, we want them to park there.
Yes. But, and again, it's the, the cost to monitor and collect was more than we would probably get from any income.
You mentioned there was a split on that revenue to Carmel. There are streets that Carmel doesn't, like old rail. There's no Carmel presence. Is that somehow split by street, or it's just overall? Is there a split with Carmel on the parking revenue?
So, just a quick note, I am, I receive the code enforcement component of this. There's no parking fees charged. You don't have anything...
Sorry, I guess tickets. I guess tickets, I guess.
Tickets, parking tickets are $35, and not one has been collected.
Right. It hasn't started yet, right? I'm talking future. Is that what you were talking about, was being split, the revenue from those parking tickets?
Yeah. So, the town's responsible for parking enforcement, Main Street and other areas around. Then Carmel's in force in parking in the parking garage. And then, also, I think they have some of their lots for the...
Okay. So, that makes sense to split with them. So, street parking would go to the town? Any street ticketing revenue?
Yes.
Okay.
But if, like, Mayor Proton, Surgu was mentioning, if the town and the district were interested in purchasing fees, or a meter would start, that would have more predictable income.
And I don't know if there actually would be income, or if it would just be an offset. But if there were actual profitable revenue, it seems like downtown would be a nice place to spend that money, given that the town doesn't have any expenses there. Because we have landscapers, resident landscaping fees. So, I'm not sure. Obviously, the town's maintaining landscape, but we're paying for it through landscape fees. So, I'm not sure what the town expenditures otherwise would be.
We've got snow removal on Main Street is one.
Streetlights.
Yeah, and streetlights, parking along Main Street, snow removals ours. And, you know, the goal is to keep that parking flowing for the businesses on Main Street, so people have access to their businesses, so...
No, I agree.
And then, we pay Parkwell to enforce, so...
And we've been paying...
And we've been paying the holiday lights downtown, right?
Those are nice. They look nicer this year than the chili pepper orange ones.
We got direction for different colors.
That was one thing the community agreed on.
There's been a couple of mentions of a refinance. And I, so I'm not a finance person, I'm an engineer. But we are, we are in the process of refinancing, but that's a kind of a different bucket of money. So there's a mill levy. The debt service mill levy is completely separate from the operations mill levy. So we can't use any savings that we get from a refinance to offset operations.
We just pay down those loans faster?
It's just, and that's really what it is. It's going to be paying down the loans like radically faster, but it's not going to change the amount due.
It can sometimes affect the mill levy, depending on how it plays out. I've had, I had one where we did the refunding and because of the interest rates was so less, so less, so much less than it was before, that we were able to drop the mill levy on the debt service. It was like 10 or 15 mils. So it depends on how it plays out and it depends on what the interest rates are. And I'm not a finance person either.
Do you know what the breakdown is between, you know, the mills associated with the debt and the mills associated with the operations?
It's, I want to, yeah, not off the top of my head. I can look it up.
It's like 170 and like 15 or something like that.
Yeah, the vast majority is debt service. Is the debt service.
So it's like 170 mils is our percentage for.
I can't, it's something, I feel like it's something extraordinary, like.
Yeah.
Maybe those all go to the district.
So the average Superior resident is like 110, something like that. So there's like additional 60 mils associated with downtown.
10 of that goes, was designated for operations.
And then 50.
It's slightly higher than that, though.
And when is the debt currently scheduled to be paid off?
When we're dead.
Currently?
No.
Is it 2050?
No, I think.
2090.
Yeah, something like that.
We have a tombstone.
We think the, with the refinancing.
I think it was like 2090. We just went through this, but I can't remember.
It's a long time.
It's a long time. Like, almost literally never.
In 2024, the operations general fund mill levy was 12.335 mils. And the total, the mill levy for debt service was 61.683 for a total mill levy of 74.018.
So our grandchildren will see that.
For something, it's just a scale of it to a debt service, like out that fund?
Somebody will give you a loan for anything.
You should see the rates. They're junk bonds. But they're secured junk bonds. Yeah, exactly. They're getting paid. They're making money.
So when, when do you think you'll have an update on the refinancing?
In January.
Kind of go into market in January?
Probably.
Hopefully you'll see another rate cut or two by then.
Cutting figures.
All right.
So I mean, conceivably, if there is a reduction to the mill levy on the debt, you could increase the operating mills and still stay below where you're at today or at.
I think that there's, there's a cap on the operations in general. So it doesn't, it's not like a ratio thing. It's a full out cap. It's adjusted.
Bound by a tier or something.
We're at the cap?
Yeah.
We are at the cap. I want to say it was 10, but it's, was the original, but we adjust it based on, we call it Gallagherization before they repealed Gallagher, the Gallagher amendment. So, but it is adjusted as the assessed valuation rates change. We adjust the mill levies so that we are able to get the same income.
Same cash flow, low bill.
I'm sorry?
Same cash flow, low bill.
Exactly. Yeah, it's a, it's a, yeah.
Any idea what the total dollar amount is on this?
For.
For everything?
For servicing.
So for the. I guess I'm not specific what you're asking.
Well, so what's, what's.
What's outstanding?
Does it change all by the maintenance or everything?
Everything.
So the total income.
Should we build a death star for this price difference?
So the total revenue for the debt service fund in 2025 is estimated to be 1.5 million, basically. And then the same, we're looking at around 300,000 for the operations funds.
Wait, is the next 60 years, 65 years, we don't break the interest? So we're looking at $100,000?
Can I ask a question of the town folks, maybe? Yeah, there's been a lot, we're on Discord in downtown, so there's a whole lot of back and forth about who said what. You know, the builders told us this was going to be free forever or included, which we know it's not now. We do, does downtown residents pay landscaping fee, correct, just like the rest of town? And we pay for trash removal separately. So we're trying to figure out a way, we also try to figure out a way, can we all get together? Metro district, I think, has some legal problems taking care of the town sidewalks. It's not, anyway, some legal response. But can we add to that, say downtown, to the landscape fee, like a, or a separate fee if we need to, like a trash, like the trash pickup? Because one, it'd be a lot cheaper as a group than it is for, if everybody tries even contract. But imagine trying to contract for 30 feet of sidewalk. It's just not even reality. So we're trying to just brainstorm on ways to maybe do that as a group. And those are just a couple of ideas that I had that, but obviously that adds to the burden of the town trying to collect. But didn't know if that's an option.
It's not anything anybody's asked before, but it's an interesting question, right? You know, I mean, I've got, you know, half a block that I got to clear on my own house, which I'd love to find somebody else to do it, other than my kids, because they can't pick up on time. But, no, I mean, it'd be a, I mean, there's definitely options out there. It's just a question of how you corral enough people, especially when you've got some, like, continuous, one homeowner may say, I don't want to do this. Right? Because they want to do it themselves or they don't want to opt in anymore.
Well, it's a lot of them that don't want to do it. Most of, I don't know, a lot of them that want to do it themselves.
Let's speak on behalf of the people that want to do it themselves rather than pay for it.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think.
I just don't think it would be much in the big picture. And when you look at the landscape fee, it's not much. If you look at the trash fee, it's not much for what we get as a group. So I can see that it wouldn't be that much more. Now, some years you have a bigger expenditure than others. Trash pickup is regular. It's easier to figure out. But it's part of landscaping when we, you know, it was part of the landscaping budget, or we thought it was, but that's where it was coming from. So that seems like a natural, where you would have just, it's an extension of the landscape fee. Downtown would be a little bit more. But we're getting a little bit more than, say, you are, where are you in Rock Creek?
I say, well, landscaping fee's a whole nother fifth round.
I can't think what I would pay for three minutes of.
Downtown's already on the town's trash contract. So we already have economies of scale with the town and hopefully we'll get more once Rock Creek gets folded in.
I think what Anthony was trying to say is if we did, like, use that as a model and did that with landscaping and snow as well. Did I understand?
And, and who knows, even Rock Creek, that could be a model, you know, if, you know, there's enough.
Well, it sounds like we may be having some of these conversations about ways to do that. And so I think this is a good first conversation to have. And as we go down, who knows what we can do. There are ways that we can do Eastman agreements and intergovernmental agreements and that kind of thing with, between like the town and the district to get some economies of scale, that kind of thing. So it's not, I mean, we're, we're pretty much, I'm speaking for the board here, but we're pretty much open to anything that will get the services that we need to get at a reasonable rate. So.
One other thought I have, because we have four minutes left, I think. The new 55-plus rental senior living that was approved?
It wasn't approved, yeah.
Okay, good. Maybe actually, good. My question is, it is adjacent and we'll be utilizing the services of downtown 100%. There's no way in or out of that without hitting the streets, the sidewalks, all of the infrastructure that's being repaid through debt service by every other business and every other resident. Seems like that's missing opportunity from a revenue standpoint for the metro district. Has that come up in any form?
We would have to amend the service plan and the boundaries.
I'm okay with that. I'm just saying.
Well, I know, you're okay with that.
Has it come up? I think, I think that land is outside of the PD.
It is, it is. And that's a question, though. I don't know how, why, and if things change. But it's utilizing, they're going to have to do curb cuts. Either way, it's in downtown. And it may be outside of, I don't know, level letter, sorry. But it seems like they're utilizing all the infrastructure that we're paying for in the metro district. We're paying these high levels of fees. The hotel properties has issues with it. Here's a group coming in and says, man, if we could build a hotel there, what a, what a, what a great place. Or senior living, seems like missed opportunity that maybe is not completely missed yet, where there's some kind of reparations from, you know, to pay, to help pay for what they're using. Obviously, they're using city services and are going to pay water taps and all that fun stuff. But they're also utilizing metro district property that was developed and being paid for for the next 80 years for free.
And I think they, I think they are included in the service plan. They're, are the districts. The townhomes that were built on Discovery are in the, are in that service plan.
Is there mill levies?
There's.
For Metro District?
That ridge is the same, right? Discovery, it's the same.
It was outside Discovery.
Yeah.
Yeah, the townhomes are, but that piece that the, you're talking about is not in the district. It's not included in the district. It could be included in the district. I don't know what that would do to the, I mean, that's a, that's a toxic finance deal, you know? I don't think, it might not even come to fruition if there was that mill levy on it because probably they wouldn't get their grant.
Sure. Which, great, they're profitable at our expense. So I know there's pros and cons of having the traffic there, rooftops, all the fun stuff that we need for downtown. But still a question of, are they paying their, their fair share?
Well, we, we approved the zoning change, but the, the whole final development plan still needs to come before the board. And they're still looking for funding from the state, from the county. So I think there's a lot of things that still need to fall into place to see if that can come forward.
I just didn't know if that, if that nugget.
And that would be subject to public meetings and a, and a town council decision.
Because here we are now doing potentially special assessments on residents and the 55-plus community is coming in and getting a pretty good deal. Might be worth exploration.
And it's a for-profit company, too.
They are for-profit. Thank you.
All right. Well, we are at time. I want to thank you all for taking the time to meet with us. And let's continue this conversation into the future. Obviously, we've got a lot of things to discuss. I would love to have the developer at the table with us to kind of discuss these unintended consequences of the way that the project has, you know, kind of grown and developed over the past decade or so, to see if we can come to some kind of mutual solution to ultimately ensure its success into the future and not unduly burden the residents that were, you know, the early adopters that bought in early that maybe surprised by property taxes and the like. So.
Mark, to build on your idea there, would it make sense, or I think it would make sense to have another work session specifically on this type of topic where we could, where we're not sitting at the dais?
Yeah.
And where we could really just kind of hash out a lot of these things before it officially comes to the board for a decision. Be a lot more open-ended conversation and hopefully idea building. I'm fine with that. I think that's, that's a good idea.
And if we did that, I would love to have, like, the district's council and more importantly, the accountant in, present because that is going to be kind of the key. I'm the high level person and Diane is the in-depth, knows it all.
What do you mean, we don't want the attorneys during the brainstorming sessions?
Fair enough.
They tend to say no, so we want to get the yes?
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay, so Diane will bring the account.
Who was scheduled to meet?
The attorney's bringing it.
I think it's you. You haven't been on the board for one meeting.
Well, I think, you know, we want to get an update from you guys as soon as you have clarity on the refinancing. And then once you've gotten the kind of figures as to what your deficit's going to be to maintain the services that you need to provide and whatever your ask is going to be for whatever period of time. Once you have that information and then, you know, subject to anything else that we want to discuss, you know, let's get another meeting on the books sometime second quarter, probably in the first quarter, second quarter of 2025. And, and subject to developers' availability as well and kind of talk through these issues and see if we can come to a solution.
And then for you guys, like, elections coming up, I mean, I'd like to believe we could leverage the town's voice to just get the word out for those elections as well.
Okay.
I think representation matters, the fact that, you know, there's only two of you on the district twos.
We try that. We, we get the word out at this quarter.
No, no, I'm saying leverage the town's broadcast meetings as well.
Sure, sure.
You're right, anything that's going to help. Yeah. Exactly.
And just to be clear, neither of you are in downtown, correct? The two board members are not residents of downtown. It was, they've, they've been board members before there was in downtown. So that's not their fault or, that's just a clarification.
I'd love to turn it over to people.
And one, thank you for all of your, your help.
All right. We should probably be letting you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, see you in two weeks.
Maybe holidays are important.
Yeah.
Sorry, I can't talk anymore.
We got a couple more hours on schedule. Where are you going?
Jay's fine, all right.
Good. No, I won't. You know, who's. I can phone call, see you in a couple of days. I would, they probably would call me, so it's probably. It was part of the central. What was her name? She's, she's one of the.
Yes, right.
Yeah. Well, she said she'd have to call her. I said, do you want anything? I'll give you. I don't care. Yeah. Yeah, I haven't heard anything, but I knew.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm trying to find out.
I haven't got the caller, you know, my phone call, so I mess, I didn't get it. I'm hoping you do get it.
See the drum?
Can I see the drum?
There's a couple people, like the New Jersey, New Jersey drum story. It's bad drum.
Really?
Yes.
What's happening? It's the mouse.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little workstationist all the time. This guy can, this guy has the power to.
Hey, what are, what are the drums? What's with the drums? There's one in Louisville right now. Mr. Airport Guy, if you're going to be the airport guy, you need to know the airport shit.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you, same way I tell my wife and kids, coming up out of the ocean in Western Kansas.
There's one.
I know, I know. He's a new reality show. Exactly. I know what you're saying. I mean.
Yeah.
You actually, you actually do it? Are you in serious? You actually do it?
I need you to go find out. No course, until I get a drum. Until I get a drum response.
You know what I like about you? You have quick sense of humorizing. Like, you get it. You just get it. That's a good thing. So Elizabeth Laboue.
Yeah, that was, I think that's the first time I've had with them.
Don't throw me under the bus anymore. We already used the.
That was different. We have the.
I know. I didn't, but I probably agree.
No, you've been, at least.
You guys have never met.
Yeah. Yeah. Hi Brad, nice to meet you. Richie.
Richie.
Yeah. Yeah. Renee.
I like your style. I was thinking, you back?
I'm kind. Yeah, you're gonna join this party. I shall. I feel like I should go on the other side of this.
I'm always on the wrong side.
I don't know if I can.
All right, we're back. We're back. We're in this, Melissa, Jason and Mike.
You chickened out. You guys all chickened out. I was switching seats. I knew you guys were going to.
We are back and we're ready for our regular work sessions, discussion. And the first item on our agenda is item 2E, 2A, which is a discussion of the state of Colorado legislation that's applicable to the town of Superior.
And Lisa, Nick and Renee are gonna.
Hi, everybody. Lisa, we're too planning and building departments. So just doing a quick overview of some of these, and then some of these, we're gonna ask for some more feedback depending on kind of how much influence we have, where we have discretion and direction. So I just did this mostly for me, just so I could keep track of what we've got. So the first one up on deck here is the wildfire resiliency code board in response to increasing intensive wildfires, you know, particularly Marshall Fire. The state passed legislation in '23 establishing a code board. The purpose of this is to develop the area that's going to be subject to a WUI code, Wildland Urban Interface. The draft code is out. It's based on the International Code Council WUI code. Our staff is reviewing it. It's a minimum code. The town could strengthen it. It applies to new buildings and structures within the WUI. So essentially, just they are going to be basing the geography of where the WUI applies as a starting point on the Colorado State Forest Service wildfire risk assessment map. So you can kind of see here in Superior, this will be a conversation that we have to have, particularly as we drill down into kind of how this applies on the ground, right? So we can do more than this. We could do townwide. So we're just kind of monitoring the draft code for now. And then when we, when they pass that, we'll bring probably further discussion, direction, conversation with you all on some different options for how we can apply the code to Superior. So any questions on this one for now?
So this is just a staff continues monitor, nothing for us?
Yeah.
Good direction on it at this point?
We have no questions for you at this point. Just giving you an update.
Okay.
One question, though, because this is because my memory is failing me. But so after the Marshall Fire, we adopt, we did adopt some harder codes for all new constructions that were not.
In Sagamore.
Yeah, anybody who was not the original owner, anywhere in town, actually.
Just Sagamore.
Just Sagamore. So we, so the toll homes that were going up, okay.
It was PD for Sagamore only.
Sagamore, it is in the area where the WUI code has been applied.
All right, so what we're talking about here, whenever we adopt, whenever we adopt, will only be future homes that are not already covered by PD.
The board did have lengthy discussions.
We had plenty of discussions. I actually couldn't remember what we passed because we tried so hard to do the right thing. But I think at the same time, we're really frustrated that the state had not actually stepped up with anything that was consistent.
So to be clear, we have discretion, PD, no PD. This would be a code that would apply. Will have to apply to the areas that are on some version of the map. But then again, we can go stronger. We can go more. We could also say like, you know, similar to what was adopted in Louisville, like any substantial addition. Or if they replace the siding, it had to be hardened. Or if they replace the roof, it has to be done, right? So we'll bring some options to you. So we'll present the minimum. And then, you know, if you want to go further than that, here's a couple different ways where we could do that. So.
Okay.
Looking forward to that discussion with you. I think we've all learned a lot.
The state stepped in.
All right, so this is kind of the big one, transit-oriented communities. I know we talked about this last spring, but they did pass a version of the bill that is a little different than what we talked about. But essentially, the bill requires that we do what we call establish a housing opportunity goal or the HOG, right? So on this map here, you can see this black outline. The black outline was published, or published by the state. So that is the area in which this bill applies. Within that area, there's a number of properties that are exempt, right? So all the green properties are exempt. My apologies for the typo and the cover memo. So the green properties don't count toward the area. You also get to subtract out right away. So we're roughly at, you know, 260 acres to start with. After we subtract out right away in green, I think we're down to about 138 acres. You multiply that times 40, you get to 5505. We can take credit for the existing zoning capacity. It's not entirely clear yet how that works, but we think we have roughly 1,000 dwelling units in our zoning capacity. So if we're gonna comply with the bill, we need to get to another 400 or 4,506.
In that area?
Yep.
In this area, we can also, we don't on its face meet the additional one-quarter-mile buffer, but we, I think when we get there, we'll probably petition to the state if the board would like to see it. We could expand this another quarter mile. And I think into downtown, that might make sense, right? There's a lot of dwelling units in downtown. So we'll see, though. We don't.
That's primarily Bricksmore, but.
Yeah, we're penalized because we have a large industrial.
And they have not been willing to. So, I mean, where's the line for like what?
What the property owners agree to?
Yeah.
That's a great question.
It's like question number one at the state.
What if the property owners don't agree? We don't really have a legal answer to that.
This is what happens when state legislators have absolutely no experience in municipal.
Do you know how many, well, actually, find this in work. Do you know how many dwelling units Superior currently has? I know our population.
5,500.
5,500? Well, we almost need to double it.
Yes.
That seems reasonable.
And about the only place we have this level of density is on this future building going up a block eight. I mean, this level of density is, it's basically studios and one bedrooms. About the only way you can get there. Or like Jason was saying, you go tall.
Go tall.
Right? But then again, the economics won't work.
And how much of this affects Louisville, if we continue?
They have the, actually Louisville is much more affected by this bill than us. So they have the flip side of this circle. And then they also have a quarter-mile buffer around the Dash Route. So their HOG, I think, is like 12,000 or 13,000 units. So Lafayette is significantly impacted.
So the Dash is a real buffer.
What are our defenses against this?
I'm gonna look at Nick for that one.
We defer to counsel, but we can take the position that's unconstitutional.
We're home rule now.
I mean.
And that's just one of the things that CML has been pounding on the table, just, you can't take, you can't just declare issues of statewide concern that are actually issues of local concern.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, because the state is limited to what it can do as to issues of statewide concern, right? And housing typically hasn't been an issue of statewide concern. It's an issue of local concern, which is why local municipalities can zone and make land use decisions.
What's the time, like time extension?
Yeah, so the state put in the bill that it applies to both statutory and home rule. Again, defer to the town attorney. I do want to be clear that right now, as we understand it, noncompliance with the bill means we just won't be eligible for grant money, right? So there's no, there's nothing beyond that that we understand, but.
How much?
Is that the higher users?
Well, no, it's a separate, it's a separate grant program that they've set up.
So they took out, because they were going to withhold the, basically like the gas tax that you pay when you fill your tanks, like the highway users' tax.
That's gone.
That's gone.
There's no, you know.
There's no penalty.
And even if that was, it was $70,000 a year for us.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think the, I think the likelihood that we were gonna get substantial funding from the grant money that came with this bill is probably pretty low. I think the greater risk that I think the people at the state are trying to figure out is do we get other grants withheld or where does this impact us with other, you know, state-funded programs? And I think that's still a little TBD. So I don't have a lot of concern that we were gonna get a ton of money associated with this bill. And I don't know yet. I think it's a little too early to say if they're thinking about amending legislation. I mean, you would probably, you know.
No, it's talked about.
Yeah, so I think we're all still really deep in trying to figure out how to implement and understand the bill is written. And I imagine, you know, we're probably gonna come up with a list of like, this doesn't work and this is really challenging. And I know we're not alone in struggling to figure this out.
Lisa, just one point, though, like you're not, I mean, there's so many different factors in here. Like, just like Sagamore is 22 acres, 23 acres. Sagamore, they have to be 1,000 units. Right now, it's 176 homes, just to meet what the state wants, right? Like, how do you even physically do that? Everyone already complains about the five-foot setbacks and everything else.
Yep.
So you go up. But the issue is not, I mean, the state's looking for us to set a goal.
This is true.
Not to roll out the red carpet and make this happen. Because again, the blockers, Bricksmore, right? They want special things and maybe we just rezone Bricksmore as residential. I'm not saying we do that because someone will probably kill me. But if, I mean, and that's ultimately the steps we can start to take to facilitate
Yes.
this. Because I mean, one of the things that Broomfield continues to bring up is we've got, they've got 1,000 units that are approved.
Yep.
That haven't been built because the financing's not there. But I mean, that's, the cart has already left the barn. This one, we can't even start.
So I think that's a great segue into this next thing, right? So for options for compliance, so essentially, there's no requirement in the bill that we build anything. There's no requirement that we actually, I mean, we are, the base requirement is that we have the zoning capacity, right? I think that there's a lot of things that would indicate, even if the zoning capacity is there, the risk of redevelopment in a lot of these new areas is fairly low, right? Like, a property owner is probably not gonna scrape the buildings they just built in downtown and build them three stories higher, right? So I think, I think, I think, and I think that's, some of the people who are advocating for the state would probably say that. But just different things that we've looked at that potentially could help us get there would be to remove the density cap in downtown, right? As we know, downtown has a dwelling unit cap of 1,400 dwelling units, right? I think by removing that and just having it be regulated through the height limitations and the setbacks, there's, we could see an increase, probably fairly substantial, without probably a likely change, again, because a lot of that is already there. So that would be something that we could look at. Again, we can request consideration from the state for that additional quarter-mile buffer into downtown to try and capture even more of that zoning capacity. We don't meet the quarter-mile on its face, but we think we meet the intent. So we'd like to work with DOLA on that. Similar to, you know, what I just said, we could, right now, all the property that's zoned RL, because it doesn't meet a minimum density, we wouldn't be able to include it in the zoning capacity. But we think by rezoning it to RM, we could get there. And again, the likelihood of people scraping all the homes that just rebuilt from the fire, I think are fairly low because I don't think the market is there. And we have, so again, that's something that we could consider. And again, then evaluate opportunities with Bricksmore to rezone all our portions of the Superior marketplace, right? So I think the primary area where we're gonna have to pay a lot of focus is the Superior marketplace, right? And that, I think, you know, just given the adjacency, the heart of it, the investment and redevelopment potential that we've all been talking about. So those are just some of the things that, you know, we're considering.
I'm just curious, yeah, on the business side, like, are they getting pressured or lobbied from the state government or having carrots or sticks or whatever for them?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
It's bad.
That makes so much sense.
What does the zoning, what does the zoning future look for like for people who are in Old Town that are just sitting on lots? What happens with that?
Well, so that could, so here's a couple of things to think about. Some of the lots in the, in original town are already zoned RM and they've built back from a single family, right? So I think the market, and we had Eco Northwest look at that when we did the housing strategies, like, okay, from a market perspective, it's still the better bet to build a single-family house on those RM lots than to build what the max capacity is. So I think the risk is a little lower, but that being said, it could be a by-right development that would, on some of these larger lots, you know, that somebody could come in with, you know, higher density, but.
Because you and I think, we had this conversation, you can take a 50 by 140 and do a Denver infill lot, which is 25 by 140. And you can take one normal lot, now you've got two single-family residences on it. And, I mean, I would think that people who can't afford to build back after the fire might actually appreciate a chance to subdivide. I mean, construction costs would probably be 25 to 30% cheaper than a full lot build, but.
I, I agree. I think that's something that we'd have to look at. Again, the market didn't demonstrate that during the initial rebuilds, but not to say that they couldn't. I think we have a little bit of runway here, too, right? So just throwing up this schedule, by the middle of summer, we need to have our HOG approved. I think we feel pretty good about that number. We have a year and a half to basically demonstrate how we're gonna get to that zoning capacity. And then we have another year to kind of achieve it. We also haven't talked, DOLA, or in the legislation, there's an out if we don't have the sufficient water supply. We don't have the water to do this. So if, if they recognize that, it will get reduced, but we don't know yet how much.
Does anybody have the water to double their population?
I don't think so.
Not likely.
No.
I mean, I'm not making a joke, forgive me, I'm not trying to make this, but this is becoming like a cyberpunk situation. Really, we're gonna be building on top of buildings and the buildings. It's just gonna become this monstrous mini-city with too much, too many people, too high density.
So, yeah, I mean, again, though, to your point, the market, right? Some of these towns that already have it, right? I just, I think the capacity that which they've zoned for greatly exceeds what the housing needs is for the whole metro region, right? So it's not gonna go all here. It's gonna get spread out if we even attempt to comply. A few other things just to note, projects less than five acres must be approved administratively. So we would have no public hearing process for projects that are less than five acres. And then the bill talks about displacement and affordability strategies, which displacement feels completely.
Yeah, so.
Like disconnected from the bill.
Yeah. Given the cost of land in this county, this is, you can't even have that conversation.
Yeah. And the displacement, right? We're talking about upzoning and displacing residents that are here, right? So I think that there's some disconnects in the bill, but that's my own sort of thing on the displacement section. So I guess what would be helpful from the board is as we're doing some of our scenario planning and the comprehensive plan, do we even want to model, you know, some version of this amount of housing units in this area? And just at least take a look at it to see what it would do to traffic and what it might do to the town utilities. Like, we can look at that if you're even curious.
The work you would do on that, you know, this is again, it's one of the same, the state has told us to go do this, but, you know, again, you guys, you're employed by the town, but you have other jobs. And if we tell you to go do this, it's gonna be taken away from other things. And we're not getting paid by the state. It's not a grant that came in from the state.
Yes.
Assesses. Oh, yeah, right.
This is, this is, this, if we do try and comply with this bill, will be really challenging in terms of trying to write zoning code and understanding how, how it could functionally work. So I agree.
This is my problem with it. It's like, it's purely like an academic exercise. And like, I understand what the state is trying to do, but like, they, they went about it the past two legislative sessions with like a one-size-fits-all plan for housing, and that doesn't necessarily work, right? There's plenty of municipalities that are along I-25 or US-36 that have a lot of undeveloped land, like right at those interchanges where like, oh, we could actually fit like a high dozen density. Down in Broomfield, they're tearing down the first bank center as we speak right now. If you haven't driven down 36.
It's pretty wild.
It looks like it's been bombed. It's crazy. But, you know, that is like prime land with a BRT stop right on 36 where they could, you could do something very dense. It would be perfect for it. Because it's actually, you know, consistent with what's already there. And I'm sure that that's what Broomfield's gonna do. But for a town like ours and like Louisville, where, you know, you actually have very little developable land in these areas, I just think it's, it truly is like an academic exercise of like, we're never gonna comply with it. So like, I don't want you spending any more time than you absolutely need to, to comply with this because it's not gonna happen. And, you know, like, if, if we can have, you know, Bricksmore at the table and they say like, you know, there are specific projects that we want to do, like with, you know, the affordable housing, you know, project that the whole of county wanted to do and the Bus Stop and Tidings, they want to be, you know, in that discussion or have the discussion that they previously wanted to have with, you know, infilling some of the parking lots over there. I think that makes sense. But, but looking at like a radius where stuff is already built, we know it's not gonna get scraped. We can't possibly come up with anywhere near the 5,500 homes that we were required to under the state. And if there's not like a compelling, like, financial club that's gonna be coming after us, like, I just don't want you to waste your time. Like, I'm also interested in knowing, like, Colorado Municipal League is gonna, I'm sure they're gonna be putting something out about this and kind of.
Yeah.
Mapping like, this is what municipalities are doing in response to this. Who's actually trying to meet the HOG? Who's, I'm sure there's municipalities that are saying, I'm not gonna do anything on this, right? And they're just gonna, you know, resist.
I think this, so I'm, I'm great with that direction. I think the thing, if you don't mind, that I might continue to track is how DOLA is gonna be measuring the water supply. Because I do know, I think, our water, our master plan or the water. Because I do know, I think, our water, our master plan or the water plan that Brandon is working on, I think, has 1,300 UQR's associated with it and water capacity, right? And so I think, you know, that might be a number that, you know, actually is achievable. So when they have that guidance published, I might just kind of check in, here's our number. Do you think that could equate to our hog? And if they say yes, then we'll come back and we'll talk about a different number. But other than that, I'm happy to.
And as we go through like the whole comp plan update, you know, as, as we're looking at, for example, the marketplace as like an area of potential redevelopment, as you're looking through that, to look at like, what are the transportation impacts? What are the, what can the roads handle? How many vehicles can they handle?
We're going to get all that.
You know, what would we, where would we max out? You know, would it be 500 homes, 1,000 homes at the point where like the roadway infrastructure just couldn't handle it anymore? Like, that's the sort of thing that I think is actually useful for us to do and to know, and it'll help us make decisions in the future. But a fancy, full imaginary land where we're going to put 5,000 homes.
Artist writing of 60-story buildings.
I just wouldn't want it to be missed if there's anything in this that we can leverage in obtaining some affordable housing. Like, is, is there any way that this can look like a reason to put a push on someone who may have otherwise been unwilling to talk about it? Or, like you said, the Boulder County Housing Authority? Like, is there, I just, if there's any way to, to use that state mandate as a, as a, like, more weight in the push for something like that?
There's another bill that we're going to talk about that I think is going to be that bill. But I hear what you're saying, and I think, you know, Renee and I and the staff are consistently.
Obviously, we can't do what they're asking to do, but if there's like a lane there for some leverage, that would be helpful for us from getting there, that would be.
One thing I want to bring up too regarding this whole transit-oriented hub for Superior, they've completely forgotten about us with the FastTrax project. If that ever happens, it comes up.
It's coming, they're sending it away.
Once it leaves the mall, it goes over to the Louisville Tech Center and it follows existing train tracks and goes to Boulder. So we're not getting the benefit of a true urban transit core here, but they're still expecting us to put up all the housing for it.
Well, it's, it's left-hand, right-hand. FastTrax is RTD, which is completely independent of this entire conversation.
Yeah.
Right? The only reason we qualify as a transit-oriented hub is a BRT. And the only minimum is a bus every 15 minutes, which after 8:00 PM, there's not a bus every 15 minutes.
Or the one to the report is packed, or the one to Denver. Yeah, I, I think this is just, I don't think we qualify for this. We should.
I agree with.
Yeah, one, one more comment relative to, you know, capacity. When it comes to, you know, because the other pieces of the water coming in, like, what is the capacity for water treatment facility from a residential perspective and the sewage treatment facility? How much, and this was one of the discussions that came up, coming up last year, there's $30 million out there. But to upgrade one sewage treatment facility in one city is going to consume all that money, right? So it's silly at the, you know, at the, at the point of where nobody even wants to do the exercise. However, if you step back, what the state's trying to do actually makes a lot of sense. Put housing, and you can see this along the I-25 corridor down around Bellevue, Orchard. They're putting in 40-story high-rises because that's where the, that's where the housing makes sense.
The drain.
Doesn't make sense on the 36 corridor because we don't have a train. We don't have anything other than BRT, which is actually more reliable than the train, but that's a different point. I don't want us to, to sort of miss the opportunity here to go through the motions of understanding what we can do and as we leverage that with the conversation with Brixmore and RTD, right? Two are independent bodies. RTD's got a lot of real estate over here that's underutilized. How do we get them to come to the table with a real solution? Because where we get sideways in 2021 is they wanted us to rezone first before they even came to the table to discuss, which honestly is like bizarro land, right? You want us to rezone it as residential, then you will start the process to go and do the development and everything else, right? But maybe we need to do that.
Yeah. They want some level of certainty before they're willing to invest.
What we did for Kairos.
Yeah, right. And maybe that is the right direction that we start going, subject to going through the motions on everything else.
I mean, I think that's the purpose of the comp plan in my mind, right? Like, let's have these high-level discussions in the comp plan, right? Like, let's set our goals and we get the community buy-in, right? And then there's some certainty, right? Because it's compliant with the comp plan, the rezoning should be, you know, a little more straightforward because that's what everybody expected through the comp plan process. But yeah, I think, there is definitely a trend, you know, in removing the public hearings. And I think a lot of the policies that we see, like the less than five acres must be approved administratively.
That's like every parcel in, I mean, there's nothing that's.
I mean, Costco and Target are probably bigger than five acres, but yeah.
There's only one property left in my bag.
Don't say it.
Zaharis, Zaharis.
No, no, look at that one.
All right.
You know what?
Any more on this one?
Nope.
Okay, great. ADUs, accessory dwelling units. As you know, the state passed a bill that we have to allow accessory dwelling units on all lots where a single-family dwelling is. And this also applies to HOA, so it overrides any, overrides any covenants in an HOA. Permits must be approved administratively. Design cannot be more restrictive than the principal dwelling. We'll talk about that here in a minute. We cannot require parking except in limited circumstances. Can't require owner occupancy beyond the date of application, and it goes into effect in June. So we kind of have the bare bones of an ordinance started, but we have a number of things that we need to get direction from you where we have flexibility in this bill. I've had town council, I guess you guys aren't quite at council yet, sorry. This is one where I would love some discussion and just to kind of take the temperature. So the first question is, you know, in addition to single-family, should we allow in a duplex or in a townhome? And if so, I think these would suggest like internal, right? Like innovative, if you're open to that. Alternatively, that could be like a phase two, right? So we could look at that at a later date if you're all interested.
And our current code allows them in duplexes.
In original town?
In original town, yeah.
The first one is numbered as number one of the memo, right?
Um, I think so.
Want to make sure my notes track too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So when we allow them in duplexes in original town, are they, do they need to be attached or?
They have to be detached in original town.
So could you have two then? Could you have two ADUs?
I mean, there, you, we could, we would have the, I mean, that's not a question I put on here because I didn't know that you wanted to go that far, but you could have more than one ADU on a property.
Okay. Does anybody have?
Not, not currently.
Yeah.
Our code is one per parcel, but you can do it on a parcel that has a duplex. And it has to be detached, but with this, you would.
There's still like maximum coverage, like you can't.
The lot size.
You can't, yeah.
The backs and.
Yeah, all of the regs would still apply. And that's why I think for, for duplex, maybe less so, but attached, single-family in most cases, like, the footprint of the lot pretty much matches the footprint of the structure. So that's where it probably just makes sense, just to make sure it's, you know, again, internal or attached. But just kind of wanted to take your temperature on that one, if we want to write an ordinance that includes that allowance.
I mean, I, I think like generally, I'm, you know, supportive of ADUs and supportive of making them easier for people. I don't, if we're already allowing it in, in original town, like, I like the idea of us being consistent with what we're doing already and what we've done in the past, kind of moving that, moving that forward. But if there's some, some problem that needs to be corrected, like, like you're saying, like, we should be doing just something that's attached as opposed to detached, I'd, I'd be open to it. And I'd really defer to staff's call on that because you're, you're seeing this more, more than we are and the problems that are arising.
Here's kind of my only concern. I think you could, we could write it so it is allowed in all forms and only if it works on the lot and will determine how it works on the lot. I think the area where we might struggle a little bit is around parking, right? So some of our multifamilies have, like, think about downtown Superior, right? So if you had another dwelling unit or an ADU inside there, you might be adding another car. I don't know if that's a, you know, that's a, that's a neighborhood-driven decision in my mind. If that would, because we, you know, can't really regulate parking, right? So if that would be something that you all would find concerning. Also, just generally speaking, ADUs where they're allowed do not proliferate and take over communities, right? I think if we get 20 ADU applications in the first year throughout the entire town, I would probably be surprised. So I just also wanted to temper this with like, I don't think they're going to all pop up in every lot.
So besides original town, where else would you foresee people popping up?
So I could see basement conversions in Rock Creek, probably, quite a few, right? We know we have a number of them that are, and, you know, they have permitted work, but they're not permitted as ADUs. So we'll probably set up a program, hey, how to get your basement kitchen up to code, right? We'll set up a program for that.
And some of them have lots that are big enough.
Yep, they could do a detached.
Absolutely.
We're going to HOA.
They have.
They have to allow it. They're subject to the same ranks that we are.
We don't care, we don't care.
We didn't do that.
They'll still blame us. We're just following the law.
Well, we can write the ordinance to include it, and then through the discussion, you guys can pull that back maybe as we, you know, go through public hearings and adoption instead of, for the, for the single-family attached and duplex.
We're providing, it's providing an option, not forcing them to do it, right?
Oh, yeah, exactly. It's just opening up more options.
Sure.
For the, for the, I know that the, the HOAs can't say no to the ADUs. And in the staff memo, it said, you know, whether we had any position on like the architectural standards for, for the ADUs, which staff is recommending that we don't kind of weigh in on that, but.
They're ACC as well.
For the, for, let's just say we don't impose any sort of architectural requirements, but, but if you're in a, an HOA governed community, they still would need to meet those.
They can, if they have architectural standards for the principal structure, right? So the degree they have them, they can apply them.
It just can't be more restrictive.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's their problem, not, not ours.
Yeah.
Which is fine. I don't, I don't want us to assume some additional burden of reviewing aesthetics or something when we're not already doing that for somebody's house.
All right, so regulate parking, there are a few limited exceptions for where we can regulate parking. If there's an existing space, we can designate it for the ADU. We can require a new one if all three conditions are met. The zone district requires one. There's no existing parking space on the lot that could be used, and the ADU's on a block that on-street parking is prohibited. So I guess I'm just curious to hear from the board if they want to bring these options forward in the ordinance or if we want to try and regulate parking at all.
My personal bias, because we're going to talk about parking later, because we have to stay away from parking. Like, you know, I think that the planet has way too, this country has too much parking. We have too many dedicated places for my car to live. I'm happy to just step back from any parking mandates.
And I think required, or parking in downtown is going to be challenging enough to add more parking for somebody that lives in a three-story townhouse.
Yeah, they can.
Right. There's no room in the garage.
Yep.
There's limited on-street parking to begin with, so, yeah, I don't want to touch that.
I don't, I don't want to touch it. Okay, so we will not include those limited parking exceptions.
I think it should be a consideration, though, a conversation, not necessarily required. I mean, as, as I submit plans to you for my house, I have to show you where parking is.
Um, not a, again, those are the only two ways we can require parking under the bill. We can't require it under any other circumstance.
Well, in Rock Creek right now, and you've got, let's say, a three-car garage for a five-bed or house, are they counting the driveway as parking places?
Yeah, I mean, I would because they are off-street. If your driveway's 20 feet deep, then yeah.
Okay.
So I guess, you know, I mean, we could have one of the off-street parking spaces designated in the driveway or in the garage in downtown if we want to designate it for use by the ADU. But I don't know if you want to make the homeowners in the ring.
Of course, I think that's a issue.
Yeah, that's also true.
No, I missed more out of the conversation.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. All right, we won't include them, but any cover memo will include this language, so you will be reminded. Okay. Currently, the square footage allowance in our code allows units between 500 to 800 square feet or 50% of the principal structure, whatever is less. We would propose getting rid of the size limitations on either end and just say that it can't be, it has to be 50, less than 50% of the principal structure or like one entire floor area.
The footprint or the total?
No, the footprint of like the basement.
The main floor footprint?
Yeah.
Okay.
So 5,000 square foot house is going to be 2,000.
2,499.
Okay.
Or like the basement, you know, if they, in some cases, right at the basements, maybe a little smaller.
Lisa, what's your thinking behind taking that approach or recommending that approach?
Um, I think what we've heard from communities that do this is it feels arbitrary. You set a number and then maybe somebody wants to come in and do their basement and it's like, they have to wall off part of it, right? So.
Oh, I've seen that, yeah.
Like, if we want to allow ADUs, the intent of an ADU is to be subordinate to the principal structure. So we can regulate it, but.
You can make it different for detached versus internal or attached. You can break it out, but to simplify it, you could just say 50% of the structure.
Yeah.
Or one floor.
And communities that have taken that approach, have they, are there any unintended consequences that have resulted?
That's a great question, not that I'm aware of.
We asked that question and it, there wasn't anything substantial, but people don't usually build a 2,500 square foot ADU. Like, they just don't.
I think just, it just allows more flexibility because it's, we're opening this up to a much broader type of housing product than we had before, right? I think before in original town, we thought this was going to, most likely, it had to be detached, so therefore it's going to be on top of somebody's garage, which is probably a two-to-three-car garage, so 500 to 800 square feet made a lot of sense. I think now, because it potentially, it could show up in a million different types, not really, but a lot of different types of structures. I think we just go back to, my, our preference, I think, would be to go to the original intent of it just being subordinate to the principal structure, which is less than 50%. But happy to, if you all want to do some limitations, we can explore those.
There's a house in West, sorry, you have to make it.
Yeah, I think the only thing where I was going, you know, again, it's, it's worry about the extremes, right? Like, there's a handful of homes in Rock Creek that have enormous lots
That's true.
that could easily build a 3,000 square foot ADU.
Yes.
And that's what I don't want to see.
We could cap it.
Right? I mean, whether it's 2,000, 3,000, whatever the limit is, I'm just, I'm leery of, you know, that extreme to suddenly you have a second home back there because it's defined as an ADU.
Yep.
Whereas it doesn't meet the, the spirit of what it is that we're trying to do. And granted, that same person could build three different ADUs at different sizes, but that's, you know, could be a lot.
I mean, I think.
Why do we care though?
Yeah, what is the.
If somebody has a massive lot and they want to build a big garage or whatever it is, like, I, I, I don't care.
Yeah.
It's another house, potentially for a family.
More property taxes?
Yeah, my knee-jerk reaction was no, because it's, like, my parents have a 5,000 square foot house. I have a 2,000 square foot house. I could build my house behind them.
Yes.
Which just seems really weird.
But you couldn't fit it in their backyard.
No, I couldn't. I'd be in, I'd be in, I'd be in wildland.
Exactly.
Well, you can go.
I mean, I think.
Vertical. Yeah, I mean, you go down too. A lot of places in tight situations are building a basement for an ADU and another ADU on top of it. So you're actually doubling the enormous loads that way, and the footprint's the same. But I think, I think I tend to agree with Mark. I think it's, we're still, we're still subject to like setback requirements and then total lot coverage, right? So we're not allowing people to like cover 100% of the land that they own, right? Just don't need to have.
It's nothing they couldn't build as the principal structure, right? So the principal structure could be 8,000 square feet if they have that much capacity, so do we care if it's.
Question, there's a house in West William that the ADU is the same size as the house in front of it. It's on the 100 block.
Okay.
Is that, what?
It has to be 50% or that size range, right?
It's like 100% the size of the house.
We have, well, we don't, that's weird, isn't it?
We might have to look into that one. I don't know off the top.
I'm just kind of curious if that type of percentage wise could be applied to different areas.
We can establish different standards in different neighborhoods if we'd like. We could leave.
This bill only requires us to allow 500 to 750 square foot ADUs. That's what the bill's language says. But we already allow 500 to 800 square feet. And because we have to now allow internal, attached and detached, it adds a level of complexity if we start, you know, saying if this, then this, and if that, then this. And we can do that, but that's not.
I apologize if it became more difficult.
Oh, you're good, that's fine. So I mean, hearing will kind of start with just the less than 50% or one entire floor area.
Yeah.
Okay. So next question, I think, Mayor, you had kind of hinted at this. The bill does say we can regulate architecture or other design standards to the degree we regulate them on a single-family home. We would propose not to do this and let this get regulated through an HOA or district if applicable and just go with the basic zoning standards? Okay.
I mean, in downtown, I, I don't really foresee this happening because it's dense, right?
Yeah, they're probably not changing the.
Yeah, we've got design, we've got design standards there that are incorporated into the PD. So those are already there. So there wouldn't be necessarily anything in addition for us to do. Like, if somebody. Like, if somebody wanted to fit an ADU on one of the, maybe like the Toll Brothers homes or whatever, something that has like some.
Think about like maybe Coal Creek Crossing, right? I think Coal Creek Crossing comes to mind, right? So that is a Remington FDP with really specific architecture, you know, if somebody wants to bump an addition off the back, I mean, I would imagine they'd make it compatible, but would we look at that or would the HOA look at it?
Yeah, I mean, the HOA, I presume HOA has jurisdiction over that.
This is kind of a fundamental question that I would love to kind of take your temperature on as well. Once a home is built, like Rogers Farm, we cottages, for example, Coal Creek Crossing, I mean, do we care as the town, you know, if a homeowner wants to make minor changes to those exteriors? I mean, I know we struggled with it with Sagamore, right? Because we had to actually get rid of them so they didn't have to build it back. But I think we could look at something where once the initial certificate of occupancy is approved compliant with the FDP and they want to make an addition off the back.
We're not an HOA.
Yeah.
And we took the position also with respect to like Rock Creek fences, like, we don't care if you have a fence, right? Like, the fences were put in there by the developer, they were approved with the PD, but they are supposed to be looking a certain way and painted according to the covenants. And like, our position is like, I don't care what you do with your fence, like, that's for the HOA to sign, so like, I don't care what color, you know, you paint your house, I don't care whether you have a fence or not, I don't care whether you have an ADU or not, and I think that that's probably the appropriate.
Okay.
Because otherwise we're just like signing on for like a huge administrative burden for county staff.
Okay, great.
So just as a process question, so hypothetically, somebody in Rock Creek wanted to build an exterior ADU, that would still have to come before the planning commission?
No, it has to only be approved through a building permit.
Oh, okay, so.
And they're ACC.
And they're ACC.
There is a designer.
Would the neighbors have an opportunity to?
Nope.
The ACC board would do that.
Okay.
Yeah, just a building permit.
But it still needs to comply with setback requirements and total coverage requirements and then whatever the HOA architectural standard.
Trying to get a sense of neighbors are being pitted against each other because they don't like the fact that their neighbor's putting up an ADU in the backyard.
It'll be interesting to see what the AD, the design review committees for HOAs do because they can't be more restrictive than they already are for homes.
They purposefully noted that, I was wondering, because I was like, they'll just rewrite it.
No, they can't change what is allowed in the design of, for these, they can't make it more restrictive.
Great. All right, last question, should we require owner occupancy at date of application, so we can't require it after they apply?
So my feeling on this is yes, and the reason being simply because the economic benefit here, buying a couple of homes and just building ADUs and moving on is so great, and that's not what the intent of this bill was, to create a bunch of rentals, just create like additional home capacity here.
Yep.
You know, maybe it has to just be a superior resident if it's not, you know, owner occupied or something. I don't know if we can deviate from the line.
We can go, we can go lighter.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of what we did for the CR bill.
Yeah, something like that, but that's up to you all.
And Mike, because Mike, just thinking, because this is the issue that all the Airbnbs are saying, they're just getting picked, homes are getting picked up by LLCs because that would be an easy way to do this, right? And just add, you know, 20 different ADUs in different places and move on. I'd rather not see that happen.
You already have enough rentals in the town.
Well, so the point, the point of this is, you know, owner occupied and so you're putting up an ADU so your elderly parent can, you know, have a place to live independently but still have, you know, you're, you're there to help, right? Or you can have your college-age child who moves back home and they haven't quite, you know, left the nest.
They can try and make them out.
But they could have someplace to live, right? That's, that's the idea. And then, you know, once those things, then, you know, if you're looking to make some money and help with your mortgage, you could rent out that ADU and you're providing housing that's more affordable than what's currently available, but you're not using this to just turn like a neighborhood into an Airbnb space, right? So.
And if there is a detached ADU and they, to Mark's point, do Airbnb it, is that still consistent with the short-term rental?
Our short-term rental ordinance allows an STR in either the principal or the ADU, so they could build an ADU for the purpose of using it as a short-term rental.
But the benefit being is that they're owner occupied.
They would have to be there.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was afraid of, because you could just buy a, you buy three of these, create ADUs and just, you know, vanish.
Right.
Yeah, that would be my fear too, and I think we've kind of seen that with the STRs in Sagamore. I think that there will be certain individuals that would take advantage of this, so I would like.
So we can include it in the first draft, and again, I think, you know, over time, if we find it's actually, you know, if it's, we can, we can change it over time, but well included in the first draft. Superior primary resident or actual owner of that property?
I'd make it open, yeah.
Okay.
Keep it on board now.
Okay.
And the one note on this one is that will not apply per the bill, that doesn't apply when you're building a new primary dwelling.
That's true.
So if you're to buy a lot and build a house, then you could build your ADU without a owner.
Or without the owner occupied.
Yeah.
Only the production builders are allowed to build ADUs at the front end.
Exactly.
Yeah, because they don't live there.
Yeah.
Okay, call. Okay, thank you.
So that's kind of not an issue.
I think it's fine here, sure.
Yeah.
And remind me again, I know you just said it, but I spaced out, so our STR ordinance allows either, either building, right, if you have an ADU or not, to be used as a short-term rental. And we have, you need to be onsite, owner onsite?
Owner occupied.
That has, well, that has the primary residency requirement, right? That, so if you own a lot as an ADU, you have to live in town, right? So that does.
So you just have to live in town.
Ongoing.
Right, okay, so you don't have to live on the property, you have to live in town.
But that has to be maintained throughout.
Right, and that's the whole, like, we don't want to deal with the problem, we want the owner to deal with the problem.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
All right, so finally, should we pursue qualification as a supportive jurisdiction? We're going to bring the housing strategies back to you in January, so I think a lot of these are the same as those, so I think in my mind, we can kind of have that conversation about what strategies you like for housing and we could potentially apply them here. If we do this, there may be some grant funding that becomes available to us to help keep them affordable and things like that, so I'd recommend we do at least one of these.
So a supportive jurisdiction wasn't clear, is any of these or all of these?
Any, and I think the one that we plan to do anyway, what's the wrong one? Ah, sorry, is this assisting property owners with assuring, ensuring pre-existing accessory dwelling units comply with local laws? I mean, I think we plan to at least provide some information and coaching, like, hey, you converted your basement 10 years ago, here's what you need to do to bring it into compliance, so I feel like we're going to stand that up no matter what, so.
I mean, we're effectively already doing the.
The short-term rental.
The short-term rental.
Yeah, the limitation on that. So I don't think these would be that difficult, but we can talk about this more with housing strategies conversation, I think. Okay. Minimum parking requirements, sorry, one more bill here, keep going. So it applies to superior, it's a smaller area than what it was subject to in the TOC. Basically, it says we can't enforce or enact local laws requiring minimum parking for multifamily residential or certain other residential projects. We have no zoning that would allow multifamily residential in this area, so if that's the case, DOLA just recommends that we adopt this phrase in our code and our off-street parking code, so we'll just plan to put an ordinance in front of you that includes this phrase to be compliant with this bill. Any questions on this one? All right. Housing planning and trustee Cowish, I think this is the one, right, that I do think, like, in terms of showing the state that we're going to be working on housing, this is the one that applies. So this requires that the town do a housing needs assessment, housing action plan, and then water supply and strategic growth elements within our comp plan, so it's kind of three components. The first is a housing needs assessment. There's an opportunity to do this both, to do it regionally or do it locally. I think we're still trying to understand what, how that would actually work. We have to do this by December 31st, 2026, and every six years thereafter. The HNA that we just did would not meet state requirements, so we backed away on some of our recommendations in there, so.
But we did that housing needs assessment because of state mandate.
We did.
And so now they're making us do a housing needs assessment and not.
So, yes.
Mark, you did the assignment.
So I think the thing, I think the thing that they learn to exercise is there were no kind of standards or criteria by which we're creating these housing needs assessments, right? So I think one of the goals of the bill is just try and say, okay, here's all the factors so that we are all kind of working on the same thing, build with how these get set up, right? So it includes like a lot of different factors, which is why, my guess is, is many of us are going to go the regional path, right? Because I think we'll get economy upscale and we'll get better data and we won't have to look at it just through us, but again, still working that out. But just to be clear, the one we just did won't meet state requirements. I think that Dr. Cogwin, we're unclear if that one will meet it, and I think they're evaluating that.
So will there be state prints to.
I'm sure there will be.
Or reverses for the plan that we just did?
They paid for the plan we just did, so.
Well, some of it.
They paid for 75% of the plan that we just did, I think.
So wait, so, I mean, you said we're going to.
We haven't adopted it yet.
Is there even any benefit to adopting it?
Other than we'd have to pay back the grant.
Yeah. So we, so we adopt a plan that's not in compliance with current state regulations?
There was a payback.
Well, you can adopt it and then repeal it the next, like, as a next act.
You must adopt the useless plan to keep your grant money.
But we can repeal it because we've already adopted it and we can repeal it, we've already met the first criteria.
Can we do back-to-back votes?
So we have to adopt, to not pay the money back. We have to adopt the plan and we have to implement one of the strategies, and I think, you know, the ADUs will meet that, so I think we're fine there, but.
So similar to TOC?
Yeah.
No, I'm really like, I am really pissed off at the state for just sending us on these like wild goose chasers that, it's like you've got like, oh, this legislature, we're going to solve all the problems and do all these things, and then here's some money, but you got to have skin in the game as well, and then it ends up being useless, right? So like, I would like us not to waste time, money, and effort going forward, so let's, let's consider approved so we don't have to pay back the 75K to the, to the state for the housing needs assessment, and then let's just sit tight and wait to see what Dr. Cog will do.
Yep.
And then, you know, to the extent that we have any additional mandates, you know, coming down the pipe from the state with respect to this, like, let us know before you start doing that, but I don't, I don't want us to do.
There's really no action, yeah, we have to take.
It's just a waste of your time, right? And our taxpayer resources.
Yeah, there was no direction on this one, I agree, so I think this was just an update.
I mean, we're, we're trying to do these same things at all levels, right? Like, we're trying to bring affordable housing, we're trying to be sustainable with our development, we're trying to, you know, help people develop in smart ways, all consistent with what I think the state is ultimately trying to do, but we're just doing it in a more, I think.
Inefficient.
Sound, no, we're doing it in like a sound way, whereas the state's just passing a bunch of bills that are drafted by various different, you know, lobbying interests.
The governor's going to change in the next two years too, so it's going to present another wave of shenanigans, just pending the next two years of whatever this all is going to look like, so.
All right, prohibit residential occupancy limits, so as you know, the rigs we have in place today are no longer enforceable, any occupancy regulation that's based on familial status. So I think when we bring forward the ordinance, probably unlike the parking one, we'll also kind of bring one forth here that basically removes any regulations for occupancy. The bill does allow that we can do occupancy regulations based on demonstrated health and safety standards. I think our preference, Nick and I, is to not include that because the minute we say you can't have more than eight people in your house, somebody might have nine children and then, right, like, we put a barrier in front of it. So that's our recommendation, but we can talk about it if you all feel differently.
So we do have, you know, various, and they're pretty rare, but like, when you see them, you notice them, homes that are being rented to a ton of people, you know, where you can tell, like, all right, there's 10 cars associated with this, like, one house and there's not enough parking, and so that causes issues for the people that live nearby, so what do we, what do we say to those folks?
I think we could look at eventually like a rental licensing program where we actually do have a role in, you know, short of that, you know, we could look at, if parking is the problem, right, similar to the short-term rental, do we have a permit program, right, where every house can have four cars or, you know, I mean, I think, again, solve the actual problem, like Nick likes to say, so.
And there is, so, you can still do health and safety.
Yeah.
And the International Property Maintenance Code, which I was just looking, which Superior has adopted, that's got a pretty good bedroom limitation on size of bedroom versus person in bedroom, so I think even if you, I mean, even if we repeal these things, I still think you're going to be able to regulate to a safe, reasonable level, to where if you have the 10 people in a three-bedroom house, I think you're going to be able to regulate that back still with kind of what's on the books right this second. So I still think that's, that's possible and then additional.
Okay.
Would that be by code enforcement?
Yeah, building code.
It's a building code thing.
I don't remember the numbers, but it's, it's pretty, it's, this bill, to get into kind of the politics of it, pretty much targeted Boulder and Fort Knox.
Oh, that was clear.
Yeah, we know, the Boulder.
Yeah.
And they've already, I mean, Boulder's already repealed theirs, at least it's gone through the planning commission.
Yeah, they did, and if you go to Boulder's, you know, informational website, they talk about the same property maintenance code and that, they're still going to try to kind of.
Well, I mean, you know, I think Boulder City Council wanted the state to step in because every time they tried to get the residents of Boulder to repeal it, it wouldn't happen.
Yeah.
So, it is what it is.
So I think, I think repealing these in the code, I mean, one, we need to understand law, and two, I think it'll have a relatively negligible effect on problem households.
And honestly, I don't know when we've ever actually enforced the code that we have in place today.
Well, the sheriff's office tries.
Yeah.
It's hard.
Exactly, yeah.
And I, I get where you're coming from, and as long as we're able to enforce that, but I want to make sure that law enforcement has a way to make sure there are some standards because, like anything, I think people will take advantage of it, and I'm really not in favor of packing so many people into a house that it becomes a nuisance for everybody around, or really not a great situation even for the people living there.
Okay.
So as long as we can still have something.
As long as we can bring cops who enforce building code, which might be an interesting thing, but I don't know why, with the chief conversation, yeah.
This is good feedback, I think when we bring the ordinance to you, we'll bring some additional information around the authority and the property maintenance code.
Yeah, and I'll be able to, I'll get into it, yeah.
And how to operationalize that if we need to.
What those numbers are.
And we can have a discussion with Sergeant Solomon too to make sure that they are armed with something.
Okay.
with something that, because there needs to be something that is enforceable.
I'm sure there is a lens for it, but a lot of this stuff's rooted in racism. So I just want to make sure that we're not creating something or enforcing something or reinforcing something that is just perpetuating that. The town superior definitely has some revisions that could be made that address those things that were made a long time ago. And this one is definitely, you know, you have multi-generational housing, people that are living together because it's what they want to do. So I wouldn't want to create anything that restricts that or limits their ability as a family to be together.
Well, we currently have an ordinance in books that is affected by the state change that had residential occupancy.
Yeah, that's good.
It wasn't enforced. It wasn't enforced or anything, to my knowledge, but I mean, it was just.
Well, there's a lot of family in it too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and family is, you know, to that issue in particular, which I recognize, this is really more about like a roommate situation, a dating situation, but I get very comfortable for sure.
Yeah, if there's any, you know, obviously the flexibility to like deal with a situation like that, you know.
Yeah.
Nobody needs a frat house in Rock Creek.
Yeah.
Also not to limit, you know, a family of nine that are living together because that's what they.
And that's where I'm right, like exactly, right, like the minute, yeah, because one might be, you know, might be necessary and the other might be completely disruptive, right? So how do we accommodate both? Yeah.
Boulder, I mean, Boulder has probably gonna have to pioneer this, right? I mean, it seems like rather than relying only on Solomon, you have Solomon talk to Boulder PD and like, what are they going to be doing? What is Boulder City Council directing them to do? Because they're, they're gonna want to take a very light touch to this as well.
Okay.
I don't want to, I don't want to be reinventing, Boulder's got a huge issue that they gotta deal with, they're gonna have a small issue and they, they've got years of trying to work on this.
We can talk, maybe we can reach out to their council. Talk to them about what their, like, salt cards.
Established structures also the occupancy or the health and safety too. So that's one thing that if we go crazy with it, is are we creating an unsafe living situation for people?
Yeah, I mean, right now, you know, I think the action on this is to just repeal what the bill tells you to repeal and stick with the code that you've already adopted. So I actually don't think there's additive law that we really need to take right now. I think it's just taking some stuff out of code, coming into compliance and then basically handling it the same way that the town's handled it for years. I don't think this changes almost anything about how the town.
Yeah, because right, I mean, right now, you know, we have a three unrelated persons and that's what Boulder had, that's what we have. So we remove that, but I can't rent my house out to 20 people.
Exactly.
Because I'm violating whatever it is.
The international, the International Property Maintenance Code.
Property Maintenance Code, okay.
I didn't know it existed.
I didn't either.
Took about two days ago.
And I have not got enough to speed on how we can.
Is our occupancy right now based on bedrooms and number of occupants? Are bedrooms like two per room? Is that?
It's people. Two people. No more than three unrelated people in the whole house.
No, sorry, the property maintenance code you were asking about.
Oh, property maintenance code? Property maintenance code is about per bedroom, yeah. People sleeping in a bedroom.
So two is considered per bed, right? No more?
It's about square footage of the bedroom.
Okay, okay.
So if you had a bedroom that was like 300 square feet, then you could put however many people the math says you can put in there, yeah.
And I think Sergeant Solomon's talked about it in his chats with the chief. There's the letter of the law and there's a tent of the law. So I think a situation where multi-generational housing, of course, the intent is to, you know, make sure that you don't have disruptions and disruption, but something like that where they could exercise discussion, but just essentially have a way to enforce if there is a situation that deems it necessary.
I just want to, I'd say, like I bring this up because in doing more regional work, it's become clear to me that other communities are very cynical about the racist roots in some of Superior's ordinances and how we haven't updated them and we haven't looked at like what policy is there and fix things that have been existing, potentially not enforced, but they're, they're in there. They're just baked into the whole thing. And so we'll talk about this later in some of the conversation of DEI stuff, but we have definitely got some work to do as a government to clean up that stuff. Because what we're telling people is that we're not inclusive. We're not a community that is, has cleaned up these things that might not be enforced and that may not be happening, but we haven't even done the job to go and say, let's, let's get this out of here. Nobody wants to see this. Nobody wants to receive this when they're coming to our community. So just a reference for, for you to kind of what the external community, the extended community beyond ours sees and other ones as well. It's not just us, but some of them are actively going through their policies and looking at what, what things trigger this and fixing them. And we're, we're, we're not there yet, so.
Well, if, if somebody's bringing something to your attention that, you know.
Yeah.
If you could share that with us, because I'd like to know what those problem areas are so you can address them rather than just looking at our entire code and trying to figure it out. But like if there's, if there's specific identified code tech sections that are problematic.
I will.
I mean, like we, we made a change, I don't know when, but like we made, we made our code gender neutral at some point, right? Like with that, you know, it used to be like all men, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Appreciate that.
No, I mean, so there's always, there's always improvements to be made, but like if there are, if you're saying that you're hearing this from other communities and they're saying that we're not doing it, that means that somebody's at least looking at something specific and then just bring that to our attention.
I will.
Yeah, I'd definitely like to know more about that too, because I think the way that this town evolved, it was a bedroom community. So we really don't have the same type of statutory beginnings that like Boulder or Broomfield or Westminster had, because we never actually had a town center, a commercial core. We just basically, you come here, you live, you sleep, you go to work in Boulder, down to your Denver, you come back home. So.
If you're rich.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, this, this was created because Boulder County created this whole Danish plan and it made housing so expensive. And then somebody said, hey, let's build in Superior. So we, we're basically like the, whatever you want to call it, we're the child of the Boulder County's problems with affordable housing. And this was affordable housing at one point, you know, based.
Boulder has its own list of these things that I'm talking about.
Boulder's got, it's a good phone book.
Deep, right? Like this is not just an us thing, but I just wanted to express like my concern for the consciousness, like how this is handled, this one specifically because it is so sensitive regionally that it's just that we're careful that we're not ostracizing anybody, that their intent is to be part of this community.
True.
I think one of the things, just like an example, this isn't even an ordinance. It's not something that we can fix as a town, but even our historical committee, the coloring book that you get starts with John Hake was the first person in Superior. Now, we all know he wasn't the first person in Superior. There were indigenous people here before he came here and there's like no reference of that. So those are the kinds of things that we can clean up that are not very complicated to do, but they just, they need to happen. They need to be prioritized. And we're all busy and we've, you know, we've had the fire and all the recovery that's been happening, but now that there's a little more space, there's some tidying up that I think we could be better at doing. And I'm definitely, if there's a specific ordinance that comes up where I can go, oh, that's, you know, like the camping van's one of them, are residents gonna be okay with changing that? No. But that's definitely one rooted in, you know, some class differences and expectations of what humans are doing, what you have to be able to do to live here, to afford to live here. So just some things to think about. Sorry.
All right, one more. This one's just an update, landscaping practices for water conservation. Basically, we will be prohibited for planting non-functional turf in a street right of way, parking lot, median, transportation corridor, on commercial, industrial, institutional or common interest properties. It doesn't require that we remove existing non-functional turf, but our water folks are happy about this and it's mostly just going to be some operational things. So we'll have, we're having, we're currently auditing all of our landscape design standards just to look for this in particular, which is just best practices and, you know, fire wise plantings, things like that. So we'll bring some information to you, but that's, this is just more of an update.
Plastic grass. One, one question on this. So I know we don't need to require existing turf. Are we allowed to plant exist, plant new turf to replace or maintain existing turf?
I think it's like 50%. There's a percentage in the.
Oh, it just means like field, grass fields, like it's not a sport field or like what's non-functional?
It's basically only in right of ways, so like tree lawns, parking lots, median corridors, right? So it doesn't mean we need to rip off.
Not like purple park.
Oh, no, it's really limited in geography.
Can't plant as part of a new.
It's like a big swath of grass.
Well, I think about the landscape medians and the tree lawns and parking lots that have.
This doesn't apply to like artificial turf, right?
No, it doesn't apply to artificial turf. It's cool season grasses basically. So like the new medians in Rock Creek Parkway, that would comply with this bill, right?
It's zero scale.
But if we were building a new road.
It does apply to artificial turf. Oh, so we can't.
No artificial grass.
No artificial turf either, sorry.
Why is that environmental event?
Microplastics.
Microplastics.
Okay, fertilizing, fertilizing lawn, what's the difference? If you don't over fertilize a lawn and. Even if you regularly fertilize a lawn, you're gonna get run off of the water with fertilizer. And so I mean, it just strikes me where you're wasting water on fertilizing lawn or using a plastic lawn and not utilizing any water. That means it's like, what's, I don't know, I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to figure out what's, what's the difference?
So this, this ordinance or this law, this only relates to municipalities, but you know, if you're a Brixmore and you're redoing your parking lot.
They can't either.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't.
I mean, they replaced everything with rock and they said, you know, we spent a million dollars, blah, blah, blah. But so on a go forward basis, anyone with, you know, was.
They change it, they can't put grass back in in these parking lots, medians, right of way. So yeah, it's again, something that we're gonna update the design standards to the degree we need to, or at least in practice, we're gonna be aware of it. And it's just gonna be some communication, but our big property owners.
Yeah, because I mean, Brixmore's an easy one. And I started thinking about some of the, you know, because the Rock Creek HOA owns nothing, but the other HOAs do own some land. So you guys are, you're not in your head like you.
We know that. I think the communication to them and I, I mean, I don't know what happens if, you know, they tear out some grass and replace it with the, I don't know what happens then, right?
We don't do permits for landscaping, so I mean, technically they shouldn't be replacing their grass in those particular areas with grass if they replace a certain percentage of, of it. Like there's a percentage in there somewhere.
I haven't seen a percentage.
No?
I'm not saying there isn't one.
We're not super.
So can you start the read on that? One of the, one of the challenges with everybody is knowing what the state has done.
I didn't know about this till I went to the state conference for planners and I was like, oh.
So I'm, I'm pretty sure the folks managing the HOAs have even less knowledge that this has happened. Can we at least get a message out to them and say, by the way?
Once we have our own arms around it, then we can absolutely.
We'll negate it to them.
And you can main, so answer the mayor's question to Steph first then. You can maintain or allow a person to maintain non-functional turf, artificial turf, or invasive plants placed before January 2026. So if you want to get in your artificial turf, do it now.
But not a rocky.
You can maintain in perpetuity. But in terms of putting a new, I don't know, it might be, it might be a staff discussion, might have to bring something in front of you guys. A local entity shall enact or amend ordinances, resolutions, regulations or other laws regulating new development. Probably handle that.
This is, this is still like, we're just talking about right of ways.
Yeah.
Parking lot, medians, transportation corridor. So.
It's really limited.
Very limited area. We're not talking about.
We're not talking about tearing.
We're not open space areas, parks, so.
Would you like to catch and collect water in systems?
Your houses, individuals. But mark your point, like when I think about the KeyBank building at the top, they've got, they've got like a, a grass median, just for the entrance to parking. They don't use. At some point they want to replace, they gotta, they gotta replace it with rocks or something that's non.
It's non-cool season grass.
Yeah, and who, who enforces this?
Whatever neighbor on your street likes to enforce this.
There's no mandate for the town to enforce this.
Well, it does say the town shall.
But we don't issue a permit for it.
They, they, yeah, but it would be, it would, the argument would be, well, this bill requires you to pass regulation for this and you fail to, so therefore.
So our code needs to.
I don't even know what you'd go after for that or what injury that is, but it exists. We can, we can assess a fine, right? Get our fines scheduled.
All right, so are you gonna bring the ordinance?
Again, we're doing an audit of all of our landscaping codes now in the PEs and what we have on the books, just to try and look for where we need to change it. So yeah, to the degree we need to bring new ordinance, we will.
So as, as we do that audit, you know, how is this, I presume that this would be consistent with what's in the sustainability action plan that was passed on, if it addresses.
Audit's gonna look at like compliance with that, just general best practices, you know, again, fire wise plantings where appropriate, how we're actually telling developers we want things done. So Shannon Weber with Design Concepts, who's been doing all this, is kind of doing that part of work for us.
I know. Part of the 2025 work plan, ACES really wants to look at landscaping, grass, turf around the town to figure out where are there areas where we can cut back and reduce maintenance and town expenses on that, but still provide enjoyable spaces for people to picnic or walk their dog or whatever. So ACES will be in touch.
I mean, I think, I think as a general, general matter, you know, having grass in medians is stupid. It's hard, it's hard to maintain, it's hard to mow. It gets destroyed from snow plowing and the de-icer that gets applied and, you know, then the watering of it impacts the road. So, you know, I mean, this, you know, if I could, you know, be the king here and decide that we shouldn't have any grass in our medians for purposes of just like roadway maintenance and water conservation, I think that that would be a good thing. So I don't necessarily have a problem with this. So I'm finding the staff doing, doing the audit and bringing forward any sort of code adjustments that we need to make.
All right, that's it?
Fantastic.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Got a lot on your plate this.
Oh, my gosh.
New legislation.
And now the new legislation of the new legislation. And the legislation hasn't even started.
Yeah, make sure you're.
I know, where are you going? The House of Representatives that we need to make for the third time.
You still did a wrong one. I don't know what it should look like, but you're just not making it right.
Story of my life. All right, we're on to item number two, which is a discussion of our town board meeting schedule for 2025.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, previous boards have decided in December usually, which regular board meetings, they'd like to cancel for the upcoming year and then set the dates for the processions. So I'm proposing if, oh, well, previous board canceled the second meeting in March, July, November, December. Spring break next year for the school district is on the week of March 24th. So if you'd like to stick on that schedule, the main question would be for the summer break, which month would you like to do? May, June, July.
Maybe we've been doing July for every year.
I'm not gonna be here the last week of July, so I'm in favor of canceling that meeting, but if you want to have a meeting, I won't be here. You can carry on without me.
We've done July before.
We've been doing, we've been doing this schedule for.
Yeah.
However long it's like.
Oh, my gosh.
Eight, 10 years.
The other question for the board then would be Memorial Day falls on our second meeting in May and if you want to move that to the Tuesday.
I think last year we had the meeting, or this current 2024, we had the meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like the classic issue, right? I mean, if you schedule it, then we're gonna find stuff to do. If we don't schedule it, then maybe we just push it in a year. I don't know.
Or it's a June impact.
Well, it started on a Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
I will not be here. I'm serious.
How much time are you taking off?
I'm taking as much time as I can. But you guys can carry on without me on, on the Tuesday meeting in May.
I say we keep it because I don't want to get backlogged again and have a mess at 11:30.
In the summer when it's never dark.
You're it for May 27th or whatever.
I can handle, I can handle one mark. Don't let them get out of this.
And then last year we had dinners with advisory committees from six to seven in the regal and the board's group that will plan. Quarterly work session days that I recommended was March 3rd, June 2nd, September 15th because of the holiday and December 1st, which is basically the first Monday of each year.
That works for me.
Awesome. We'll get those loaded up on the calendar and then we'll send you invites for the work sessions.
Possibility that I won't be here for the June work session.
We still allow remote access, remote.
Yeah, I called in from an airplane once.
Yes, you did. You can't, you gotta be, unless you're an Everest man.
I don't recommend it. I think it was a big vote or something. Otherwise, I wouldn't have just not.
And we couldn't, yeah, you kept like getting muted.
It wasn't great, I'm sorry.
You tried.
Lessons learned.
All right, item number three, to see, is our discussion of town board representative committee assignments?
We included a list of all the different outside and internal committees that the board, the board members go to and participate in representing the town. The mayor also sent around a Google docs, I think, that had hours listed that I think neither of them or Mark created. So really, it's just once the board decides who's going to be on which committees, we'll bring forward a resolution at the first meeting in June.
All right. Does everybody get an opportunity to look at the spreadsheet?
Yep.
Do you have any strong preferences? Kind of, we just gotta go down the list.
I'd like to be on the finance committee.
All right.
You're it.
I would also like to be on the finance committee.
Okay, I would also, but I'll, I'll be.
So just a little bit of history on the finance committee.
Are you not coming in the finance?
I am happy to run away from the finance, no offense. I love all the work Jeff does. No, so I mean, the genesis of the finance committee is, there used to be a finance committee and then they dissolved it because all the board members wanted to be part of the finance discussions. Then we brought it back as a way to take some of the finance discussions and offload it from the full board. So it's, it's a function of what the board wants to do. I'm happy to not be there. I may still show up for some meetings so that the board doesn't have to listen to me ask all the same questions.
But she just keep you on it now.
I feel like that's a good solution.
Yeah. So Ken Lesh was on the board and he's, he's.
He's an accountant.
Accountant, yeah. So he's CPA and then you were on it.
Yeah.
And.
Tim was on it.
And then, so then it was like you, yeah, so. And then, so then it was like you, yeah, so Paige was on it. But then once Ken stepped down, it was you, and then Sandy came on, and then I came on. So I think regardless of who's on it, I think it is beneficial to have somebody with a financial background. I don't have a financial background, so I'm happy to not be on the finance committee.
Then I will take my name off it because I'm. You're finance. Good.
Want to do it? All right. All right, so I've got Stephanie, Mike Foster, and Jen. All right, transportation safety.
I'd like to stay on that one.
Same here. Yeah. Happy to stay on it.
I'll just do what C. Dot tells me.
Jason Neal and Stephanie.
Be responsible for.
I stand by my vote.
Just as an FYI, the, and I, this is because I don't know how to do spreadsheets. The representative two and three names don't populate into the number, the hour total. But you can fix that. So whoever's in representative one has their hours.
Yeah, all the hours.
Total at the bottom. Okay. OSEC.
Doesn't like to be backup if I can, but I want to switch out to something else.
Did I say that I want to do that? Did I? Okay, I'll do that one if that one's open.
Yeah, so just a word on all the committees. I think I've served on most of them and they're all outstanding. They're all a little quirky.
Yeah, I think like part of it also is just being cognizant of when they meet. So OSEC is second Wednesday in the month. You know, finance committee will, will meet when the finance committee is available. Transportation safety committee will meet and transportation safety committee. So OSEC will be, Jen will be the lead and then Stephanie will be the alternate. All right, Park.
Can I be the lead on that?
Nobody else, Walter?
Okay.
Which one was that one?
Park.
Oh, I go.
I don't know. That's weird.
We've got ACES next, second Thursdays.
Who was the alternate for Parks? Sorry.
Heather.
Nobody's jumping to the ACES. What?
We can also come back to things as they, all right, so why don't we jump down to caps?
We'd like to grab caps.
Oh, be back up. When does caps meet?
Caps meets the fourth Thursday at 6:00 PM.
Fourth Thursday? All right.
So Stephanie's backup on that.
Fourth Thursday at what, 6:00 PM?
Is somebody?
Yeah.
All right, we got to it. Stephanie is backup.
Well, that's why I thought I was going to do historical and not OSEC. Does somebody else want historical?
All right, well, historical's next.
Historical's the one on Friday at 10:00 AM.
Did you show you don't want OSEC?
All right, we've got Heather is historical.
I'll take alternate.
I am historical.
No, I think I have.
We're all historical. We're all just cosmic dust.
Dust in the room.
All right, silk.
I'll take silk.
Silk is the one I've been told not to take.
But she didn't want you to be there at the meeting?
I'm not, it's like for the last five years, I've had a kid on silk, so they basically said, no.
You're not allowed.
I've actually talked to Silk before and I've talked him into actually, they interview us and they select. So that might be something Jeremy might want to have a discussion because and I think we talked about this, being that they're the young leaders of tomorrow, but then be a little bit more involved in the people who are leading them. But I don't see as me leading them, I see them leading themselves. I just go in and read them. They're a great group. Just go and answer your questions.
We have a backup for silk? I'll, I'll back up silk.
You do like going to those.
I do like the youth. I have some.
I'm not biased.
Rising eligible candidates because they're, they're in seventh grade right now, so by next year I think they can apply.
Then you won't be allowed to go anymore.
That's correct.
That's how that works.
All right, so we've got the Superior Louisville Joint Issues Committee. I don't even know if.
Hasn't met in the last few years.
I would like that and I would like to invite us to meet.
We didn't meet at all after the Marshall Fire and then, you know, we haven't met.
And the last, last time we met was over at the golf course.
That was a breakfast or lunch or something? We all went?
Well, we did, yeah, full dinner. I mean.
That was when I met their former.
Louisville's expressed interest in.
Yeah, Chris, I talked to Chris just two weeks ago. He really wants to get it going again.
All right, so I'll put Jen as the lead of this committee and.
So it's, it's two. There's two.
Oh, there's two representatives.
Yeah, two reps from Superior.
Oh, cool. That's great.
I'll be second rep.
All right. All right, next up are the Metro Mayor's, the Mayor's and Commissioners Coalition, so that has to be me and Mayor Pro Tem. Then we've got the CML Policy Committee. When do they meet? So they meet on Fridays from like nine to 12, 8:30 to 12:30.
Quarterly or something. It's not.
But it's not necessarily. It's like, it's like, it's, it's tracking like the legislative session. So they, they'll meet like in.
February.
October, December, February, April.
And it can be virtual, like they always have a virtual.
It's, it's pretty good because it, it really helps you stay like abreast of what the legislature is doing. And especially as like new bills are coming, coming into the fray.
But they do have a position that may or may not be yours.
That's fair.
Yeah, and then they ask, they ask for, you know, you're, you're basically delegating to vote on behalf of the town on. Do you want the CML Policy Committee to support or oppose this piece of legislation? So that's your job to say yea or nay.
I'm happy to be drafted on that.
Does that rep have an opportunity to interact with the board to get feedback before they vote on this?
Sometimes.
Usually, yeah, they do give, they educate you on the policy and then when there's going to be a vote, you know that that's coming. So as much or little as you want to communicate to the board about what the discussion is. But usually I found depending on what we were already discussing, I already knew like this is where we're at on this.
All right, any takers for that, the lead? We'll come back. Dr. Cog?
So I've been on Dr. Cog for a while. I'm happy to continue. One note on Dr. Cog is it's, it tries to be everything, but I'd say 80 to 90% of what ends up focusing on is transportation because that's 80 to 90% of the issues in the greater Denver metro area. Allocation of funding, stuff like that, TIPS programs, stuff like that. So I'm happy to stay the lead or go to backup if you don't want.
Okay, anybody else interested in Dr. Cog? I did Dr. Cog back in like 2016, 2017. It was always really interesting.
Yeah.
It's one of those opportunities where you get to, you know, meet with, you know, your, your corollaries and various different jurisdictions.
One of the challenges for Dr. Cog though, because I sit next to Holly, the mayor from Lyons. I mean, it's a huge drive for Lyons to get down there and it's, it's in person. Like post pandemic, Dr. Cog is in person. They have like a policy if you want to try to go remote, but since I already commute across town, it's actually not that hard for me to go.
And it's right downtown.
It's in downtown, yeah.
Seventeenth and.
Seventeenth and.
Chatham or something.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else?
So that's, that was my issue because I think at one point my backup was on Park and then she could never back me up. I think it was Sandy. She was covering Park, so then we never had backup coverage on Dr. Cog. And one for a while, but a long time ago.
And who is interested in the backup for Dr. Cog?
Be a backup.
Boulder Council, Dr. Cog Subregional, it's all the same, right?
They're all the same. It's, those are not hogged or anything else.
And same thing with the JECO Subregional.
I don't think, I don't think I've attended a JECO meeting in the last two years. Well, because you know, that little strip of land is in Jefferson County, so if they have some relevant discussion about it, then.
All right, so we've got Boulder County Consortium of Cities.
I would like to do that.
Do we have multiple representatives on that or is that just the alternate?
I was a backup for. Oh, sorry, no. Yeah, it's just a backup, not multiple.
Anybody interested in the backup?
Where do they meet? Is it?
It's different.
I think it's long, is it?
No, it's like different areas hosted differently. Like we went to, well, is it Lyons where they have a affordable, a new affordable housing or Longmont where they have a new affordable, like it depends on what we're talking about and sometimes they move it around to different places. Not here. That's the short answer so far as I know. It's not here.
The, the commissioners, is it Marta? That's the.
Yes, she's the lead and Ashley's the backup, yeah. I've only been to one or two meetings with Sandy listening personally.
All right, so we're waiting on a backup on this one? Are we speaking up? Okay. The next ones are staff. We've got the Boulder County Resource Conservation, Mile High Flood District.
I can give a little background on that. So Mile High Flood District is this large organization that I didn't know how it was structured. The, the role needs to be served by mayor or Mayor Pro Tem. We, so the large cities, you know, like Boulder, Broomfield, or they have their own dedicated rep and the large counties have their own dedicated rep. We were allowed, we were asked to submit an application because they needed representation from a town less than 100,000 people. With me rolling off as Mayor Pro Tem, it's open again. Louisville's expressed interest. So what Mile High Flood District would do is if, if Superior's interested, then either Mark or Jason would submit an application to the state and then we can ask Mile High Flood District to support that application. The flip side is we're competing against Louisville. Louisville had the seat for like four years while Ashley was holding it. I didn't even know it came open, so, but then Ashley called me to tell me it came open because she'd reached out to Chris and Chris was too busy. So I think it's a great opportunity. It's just, it's kind of hard to get one. You know, so if you guys, one of you is interested, then I can at least reach out to Ellie at the district and she could.
Get a fancy gubernatorial.
I did and they, they called me the mayor and I'm like, oh, awesome, I should go. No. Yeah. Like 20 by 20.
I'll take it.
All right, then, well, I'll, I'll send you the, the links and stuff to submit the, the application to the state. But I think, and I'll also make a pitch to the staff at the, at the district that, you know, Superior wants to maintain it because we literally only had it for like six months.
Yeah, we should keep it.
As much as Louisville would like to take everything, we'd keep this.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right. Jason will take Mile High Flood District, Jefferson Parkway, R T D Board, Urban Drainage, those are all staff appointments. U S 36 Commuting Solutions, I don't think ever meets anymore, right? Or is that a staff attendee?
It's open to all board members.
Okay. So we don't need to appoint anybody there. I, the U S 36 Commuting Solutions Board, a lot of what I think would handle, would get handled there ends up getting kind of handled at the Mayor's and Commissioners' meetings because Audrey DeBarres helps run those, those meetings and then organizes the group trip out to DC as well, so. West Connect Coalition, that's a staff pointy, and then a final one to make an appointment is our Sister City.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is, is a Sister City a, a formal appointment? Like it's not, okay.
So if anybody else wants to attend those meetings, we would love to have you.
Okay, like it's not like the same type of the other ones we call the form? Because I was going to say we don't appoint the, the reps to the Sister City.
Along those same lines, just to get everybody thinking about it for next year, we need to do another delegatory visit most likely in October or November. It could potentially be January 26th if that's easier for everybody's schedule, but we do need to get some board members on that, so be thinking about that.
I already go, I already want to go.
Okay, so Neil's in, whoever else. It's a really, really good opportunity to meet our Sister City.
We would be heavily considering it since we were not going to go because of the move, but yeah, please.
I bet you it's an 18 hour flight just to Singapore.
But it's a quick 18 hours.
I will tour everybody around Doha if we.
Yeah, you go there. I went Doha, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, I'll send out some more communication, but I know the committee will be excited to hear that there's some interest.
I have a question about how committees get added. Sorry. Mike has a question.
Jen just asked.
Added?
Yeah, like new ones.
They're created by ordinance?
When do we discuss stuff like that? I mean, now, I guess that's a good question.
Well, we talked about it periodically, like there was, there was an idea about. When was the last committee that we threw around as a possibility? It got shot down because it was just like another meeting to go to, but I don't remember. All of them are created by ordinance, right? So like our park committee, our ACES committee, all of those are created by ordinance. They're in the town code. But they can do, what they can't do. What would you like to create?
Like a cultural inclusion committee where we have residents telling us what's missing and what we need in our community for events and representation.
Okay.
Would it be kind of like the cultural board that they had in Longmont or is it?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't have a.
I, I don't know what the cultural board in Longmont is or does, so I can't speak to that. And I don't want to speak for Jen.
Just for the record, Mike, I haven't talked about this before. We just have similar ideas of like, there's a lacking, like is lacking here? And I think we have the residents that would be very happy to engage something.
Yeah, I, I think as the board, it'd be important to hear on how we can make our events more inclusive and diversify events that we do and, and the work that we do to sort of people feel welcome. So I think having some folks that are better versed in that, making recommendations to the board would be important.
Along those same lines, I mean, one of the things I was looking at, Longmont has a senior services advisory board and the point is to kind of help guide staff in terms of the needs, wants of the, you know, the growing population for Longmont and for us. I don't actually know what it looks like, but it's more of, you know, as we think about, you know, everybody who's aging in place, you know, how do we leverage a Boulder Longmont already have?
So we could, I guess, direct staff to take a look at like, ask that, make a, make a recommendation. But ultimately, like if we're interested in creating something like that, we would, you know, we need to put it on an agenda and then get an ordinance that would enact it.
Just think of all the great events that the town does, does opportunities for input for making them more inclusive or, or expanding events to be more inclusive, so.
Yeah, back when Tim Howard and Paige were on, I feel like maybe they were kind of looking at this. But then, then the pandemic hit and I think that that kind of sidetracked some things, as I recall.
Yeah, we tried at the time to get a D E I commission going, just to have a community wide conversations. That was a starting point.
Unrelated to this, the committees, but I know before, I don't know if it was before COVID or before the fire, but there was discussion about D E I resources to staff and it being something available. Like we're a large organization, well, medium sized organization, like this is something that typically would be part of any organization and there just, it doesn't exist here. And I, my concern is that it could fall on the shoulders of staff to educate and inform other staff members. And that is def, I would like to make sure that we don't do that. So I don't know what that looks like, but I, I think, I recall it being brought up before because I remember hearing talkings of it in the community. because I remember hearing talkings of it in the community. And I don't know what that, I don't remember what that was, if it was about staff or if it was about what you were talking about, the commission. But there's some things to explore there, but I think that's important for us.
Agreed.
Maybe that's a board priority, maybe we're on the next topic that I've.
Yeah, no, that's, that's. Okay. Let's, let's try to fill our, our current roster and then.
Add more.
Add more subsequently. So I think I have everybody filled in on this spreadsheet.
Who's ACIS?
Uh, we need ACIS.
Someone with an ACIS.
We need CML Policy Committee and we need an alternate for Consortium of Cities.
Who's the alternate for OSAC?
Stephanie.
Stephanie is the alternate for OSAC.
I'm okay to be the alternate for ACIS.
So Stephanie's left the room, so should we?
Oh, no, the other way it works is like, whose name is not on? Oh, I don't see Mark or Jason's name on here.
Yeah, we do try to like even out the hours of stuff, but I don't, I can't see that addition in front of me now.
Somehow over 100 hours.
I know, when I saw the numbers for you and I was like, why do you have so much?
It's all these Dr. Kargadon meetings that don't exist, so.
We could get rid of the hours there if that's, make those zeros.
Yeah.
For the sub communities. I don't know if the 60 is, is a real number or not.
12 meetings, a two and a half hours per, that's how that ends up there. No, that's.
That's not.
That's not right, I'm sorry. Yeah, 12 meetings.
I'll just say.
Well, it's, it's times 24 right here, so.
Oh, because of the work session, which are optional, so it should just be.
Are they?
So it's 30? Is that right?
That's probably more accurate.
All right, there you go.
There you go.
So I, I would prefer not to be lead for ACIS. I just think that.
No, I, I.
Rolling off his chair, I think that would just be awkward.
Do you want OSAC then? I'm not married to OSAC, I just wanted to give out parking so far. This is a try at the.
First Monday? Yeah, I can take OSAC, you want to take ACIS?
All right, we'll switch.
All right, what's happening?
Um, I will be the primary for OSAC and Jen will be primary for ACIS.
Big learning curve there, yeah.
All right. Which leads.
I know a guy.
Do I get the little, do I get the little cash cash?
We just leave all C committee. Michelle will hook you up. Do they allow, they, they allow remote attendance, right?
Still.
Still.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Exclusively if you want.
Yeah, because when I, when I, when I did it, it was, it was always down in Denver.
I only went down there a few times and then after that I was like.
But then we had the pandemic.
It's daytime, a lot of them are daytime too.
Oh, yeah.
So I would just close my office door and be on a CML meeting and then.
Oh, now everyone knows.
It's fine, it's my office, I can do it.
All right, I'll do, I'll do the policy committee. Let's, don't be signing up unless Heather, you really want it.
You were tracking it anyway. I remember at one point, I'm like, why isn't Mark on this committee? He's following all of it anyway.
All right. I think we've got everybody filled in here.
Thursday meetings, huh? That's the new one.
Okay. Matt, I'll send you a copy of this sketchy, just so you have it. All right, we're onto 2D, which is a discussion of our 2025 board priorities.
I included for the board, the goal statement, so we just updated it this year, thanks to me taking the lead on that. Those typically don't change from year to year. I think the last time they were updated was maybe 10, 10 years prior to that, so. Then I also included the previous town board's goals for 2024, just to give you an idea of kind of what they had listed. This is great because it gives staff an idea of what your priorities are and what we need to focus on, so it's a good discussion to have.
Yeah. I think this is always the, the most important discussion that we have at this work session. I'd like to just go first. I've got four main kind of buckets of goals. They're similar to what's been discussed in years past, but it's infrastructure, litigation with RMA, economic development, and then our budget. And on infrastructure, it's really finishing the, the intersection of Rock Creek Parkway and McCaslin, completing Rock Creek Parkway from Indiana down to 88th with a roundabout at Coal Creek Drive, redeveloping our North Pool and then developing a plan for the South Pool, which we subsequently execute on in 2026. All of that is kind of consistent with the bond proceeds that we're going to be getting as a result of sales tax passing. Number two is just, you know, continuing to represent our neighbors' interests specifically in, in southern Rock Creek with respect to the noise and pollution coming from RMA. Number three is economic development. So a, a lot of these are, are things not necessarily for us to do because they're sort of out of, out of our control, but they're things that I think we still need to keep top of mind that should be priorities. So on, on the economic development side of things, I want to see us breaking ground on blocks 25 and 8 in downtown. I'd like to see Bigsby's break ground and just additional leases along Main Street. And then the fourth priority is doing, and this is something that we discussed previously, but doing a deep dive of our budget in the first quarter of this year to figure out, you know, where there's opportunities for us to impact the budget early on in the process rather than in August, September, when we, we see it and it's already baked and there's little, real substantive changes that we can make versus just kind of like a one-off line item veto on a particular project that's not necessarily going to be a need all that much. But those are my main priorities. Infrastructure are my main litigation, economic development, and the comprehensive review of our budgeting process. Others?
I think I, the only thing I had different was that your first one, infrastructure, I actually had it sort of scoped out differently, sort of just execute on what the voters told us, you know, with the sales tax increase, you know, sell the bonds, just get the money and execute on as many projects as possible and as short as possible. Go spend the money fast. That's way ahead of it.
Which we're gonna have our discussion next on how the capital improvement project priorities for bond proceeds are going to use.
Plying off your, your budget idea, this is going to be a little bit of a variation on theme, but I would like us to talk about how we re-envision what our budget looks like so it's more digestible for the community to understand what it is that we're spending money on.
I'm gonna tell ACIS you put this.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. You know, there's a thing called EMI.
We're all telling ACIS you put this.
I know. Because I didn't want to ruin the surprise. So the first page, and I'm not going to go into all of it, but the, the first page is how the budget is currently presented on the website, which is really intimidating for somebody, a resident, to figure out what it is, where we're spending money. And the next couple of pages are neighbor, neighboring jurisdictions that present that same information in different ways. And I personally like the way Jefferson County presents their budget. It rolls up to an executive level summary of what they're spending money on, whether it's one time or ongoing, the FTE requests associated with it. So I'm hoping that we can, through our budget process this year, evolve how we present this and what this ultimately looks like to something that's a little bit more digestible. And then the last couple of slides are concepts for reframing how, where we spend money and how we frame that. Some communities call it a core service area, some call it town service area, TSA might be confusing with folks at the airport, but it's, it's really about how we prioritize where we spend our money. And if we prioritize it and focus it on five or six key areas, then it makes it really easy to communicate with the community where we're spending money, why we're spending money on these priority areas. So that's kind of page four. Page five is kind of a two-pronged approach. There's how we are spending money and granted, this is using Jefferson County, which is a county which is different than us, but the concept is showing how the dollar is, is split up with our town expenses. So creating some kind of infographic that displays that in a very digestible way, I think it'd be a really powerful tool. Also evolving our budgeting process where we survey the community, we give everybody a hypothetical $100 with, based on categories of how we're spending our money now and say, how would you allocate this $100? So we get direct feedback from the community on how they would spend that $100. It could help inform where we think the community's priorities are based on that. I see this could be a very engaging online tool where people can move money around so they can see, hey, I've spent 20 bucks in transportation and $40 in open space and I need the rest of the money on something else, but I want to do these other things. So it really gives them that understanding, oh, I have to shave here if I want to fund this other thing. So it gives them kind of that real life experience of what town staff have to go through and what elected officials have to go through when adopting a budget. So I think making that as an interactive part of our budgeting process for 2025, and if that's overly ambitious, maybe we look at that for 2026, but that's kind of my vision for how we evolve our budgeting process.
I like it.
Yeah.
I love it.
I, I think, I think it's, it's really hard when we have, you know, $65 million that is being collected and spent, split between four different groups and then split between departments and this department has half a car, that department has half a car and this department has half a person or 25% of a person to really understand like, how much are we spending on vehicles? How much are we spending on personnel? How much are we actually spending on managing existing facilities? How much are we spending on whatever it is, our capital, you know, road projects? So, yeah, making, making improvements to, to make things more condensed and digestible, I think is exactly what we should be doing. So I, I appreciate this and I like, I like the examples that you're bringing from other, other towns. It would be, it would be good to see, you know, who, who else is out there that, that's doing this well. So I'm, I'm all for it.
I really like it because I think it feeds into the community trust piece of things for engagement with them about providing something that is maybe more able to be absorbed quickly or out of any complicated time to just distill it down. That's actually one of the things on my list is, and why I want to be on the finance committee was an improvement just to the process of how the information is shared. So that's, that's awesome, that's great.
And I mean, taking something that's very complex like a town budget and communicating that clearly and simply is an art. And I'm sure we will need Kevin's expertise to help us with some beautiful demographics to digest and simplify spreadsheets into this beautiful thing that clearly communicates what it is we're intending to spend money on.
So I mean, I, I think with, with regard, I mean, I think everybody is generally, you know, directionally in favor of doing something to improve the budgeting process. We've been talking about that over the past month or two now, so having either a special meeting or a, a specific like work session where like that's the, and before staff gets too far along in the process and, you know, we don't want to all of a sudden throw these like curveballs at you where it makes the logistics of planning the budget, but just so we can kind of level set our expectations and what's actually doable. Get that on an agenda and get that scheduled.
Some of this might be, take a couple of years to fully go out just because of some of the complexities of what you're talking about, so.
Yeah. Because as part of that, we also had, you know, previous requests about how's the landscape fee?
Yeah.
Being, how's it being collected? How's it being spent? How, how do we make it self-sustaining so we're not having to supplement it out of the general fund? So I know that that's on your list of.
Right now, second meeting in January.
Excellent. So that will play into this whole, whole process. All right, others, goals, priorities?
Yeah, actually relative to what Mike just ran through, because I think one of the pieces that, you know, everybody's always trying to figure out is what's the total head count? Because I think this gives us a better idea of visibility on where the heads are growing because it's hard to see that in the budget docs. So I'd love to see this, you know, another layer here in terms of how we see the town staff growing relative to the needs that we keep throwing or the things that our residents keep asking for. Because it's not just about the dollars, it's about head count too. And head count's one of the largest line items that we have and I think we need to provide additional visibility into the, the head count that we have. Because I think there has been a transition. I think historically we subcontracted out a lot of work and we're bringing some of that in-house and there's been some, some big savings for that, but the, the, the community doesn't always see that, they see a net head, but you know, I think my, my example is always Christine because she paid for herself within like the first six months, right? So those are the opportunities that we, we're not, we're not articulating them well. So I think, you know, this kind of messaging with an overlay around what we've done, why we made those decisions, I think will help going forward as well.
All right. Others?
I think for me, the comprehensive plan, but specifically the housing piece of it. And I'd, I'd like to see a shift from, our conversations are always around adding more housing and that is, should stay open as a conversation, but we have a huge amount of renters and the more I work with the Boulder homeless and homelessness and housing group, the more I understand what a capacity we have as someone contributing to the regional level of keeping people in the housing that they're in, right? Like we have such a high rental rate here and we have, you know, spaces where, whether it's the single family homes or the condos or Bell Flatirons. And some of those people, unbeknownst to us, are just one disaster away from not being in a house, which then contributes to the Boulder County, you know, resources that they have for homelessness and housing issues. So, and I think in our community, there's a lot of resistance to adding more housing just in general, whatever the reasons, all of them. But I do think that our community can really get behind keeping people in the homes that they're in. And so maybe, and, and that's legitimately a piece of keeping people in housing. And I don't think we focus on that enough. And we've talked about, you know, whether it's changing the AD, you know, changing a basement to an ADU so somebody isn't having to go find additional housing, but somehow to capture that as, whether it's reframing an existing space to hold another person or family or situation, ADU basement, or the renters, you know, whether we have more prioritization of communicating what the options are if you are about to not be able to make your rents or where do you go? You know, what are the resources? Like I think for us as a town, we can do a lot more to make sure renters are taken care of and know where they have options to get more support or even possibly down the road if there's grants or funding that can come from state or federal level through us as a town to have resources to support people staying in their homes. So I just want to make sure that's added to the housing conversation because I think we actually can do something about that. That's a thing that isn't years down the road, it's right now.
It doesn't require building stuff.
Right, right.
We always get anger to, you know, let's go build something.
Right. And it's genuinely not like a DS contribution, like it needs to happen. Like there, these, keeping people in their homes is equally as important as getting people that are experiencing homelessness into a house. That is, that's the other side of the, the line. So however the, you know, housing is discussed, I would like to keep it a priority that we do more for ensuring that our renters are informed and that we understand what we really have in that capacity. Because I think sometimes, myself included, we can be very owner focused and policy for the owner and what they're going to do. I think we have something here where we can be of service to the community in a way that's broader than just someday we'll make affordable housing, so.
So just a question, are you envisioning? Are you envisioning like kind of policy changes that we would make? Like, kind of similar to what we're talking about with the ADU, policy changes that we're going to be making as a result of the laws? Or kind of like putting together some sort of informational resource that would refer people to, these are the state resources. These are the county resources that are available. And basically, kind of build out something on the town's website already. So a place for renters to go where they can access those resources.
I think that second part would be the start, really, because the information already exists. And we just haven't packaged it for our community in a way that makes it accessible for them. And we're not putting it out there in front of them. And potentially down the road, as things shift. I have no idea what the funding avenues are for something like this. Or that our staff could even handle adding something like supporting renters and funding. It may just be a matter of like, we're directing people. But the advocating for them part, I think, is the big piece of it. I don't know that there would need to be policy change. I mean, the state has just come up with a lot of renter protections. So some of those things, it's about educating them about what is, what rights they have to stay in their homes and what services for health and safety they have access to. So it really, I don't think it's a policy change at this point. I don't see where that would fit yet. But I think just earmarking the rental community in general. A part of it for me is just, I'm just getting, I'm tired of other communities looking at us and not doing anything, right? But we have the ability to do something here. And a lot of it is like, well, I can't make more land in Superior. I can't, you know, there's a lot of legitimate reasons why there isn't a lot of movement. But this is one of those things that I think doesn't get talked about enough, that we actually have, like, the rental population here is, we can keep them in housing. And that's a huge contribution to the pipeline of housing and homelessness. However that looks in terms of prioritizing it. And I'm happy to work with, I mean, because I think this is really just going to be like a communications, marketing campaign for this specifically. And I'm going to make a point to somehow meet with renters groups so that we are getting more feedback and have more relationship with them. I know after the fire, there was a lot of grumbling. And like, people didn't care about what happened. These are comments from the public, but like, people didn't care about what happened to the renters. So I just want to address all that. I think that's something we can do collectively.
Can I be your alternate on that? No, because I think you and I, we've had a lot of discussions about that. And I grew up in situations like that. But when you're done, I've got something that kind of ties into that, too. I think that's an interesting thing to do.
I don't quite know how to write that. But I mean, that's just specifically housing under the cop plan, but renter-focused.
Well, maybe surveying other communities. And if there's somebody that's doing it right, as opposed to what we're doing or as opposed to what others are doing that we can emulate. I don't think there's a need to reinvent wheels that have already been invented. If they're functioning, so.
And then the economic development thing is a huge piece, like getting downtown Superior stood up in a broader way this year and the next year.
Full scope.
Okay. Others?
Yeah, I'll be back on your chest saying you and I have one comment. I pretty much want to do everything I ran on. Number one, economic vitality of the town, downtown Superior, Burt's Moore, Safeway Plaza. And I'm the lightest person on any committee right now. I've got Mahalo District and I've got...
Which is subjective to the state agreeing to it.
Yeah, so let's say it doesn't happen. I've got once a quarter with Brennan, and he'll still have me on transportation. So I've got plenty of time.
And we want CMO Policy Committee.
I'll be your alternate on that. Didn't you take it?
You did.
I decided to follow.
I said, let me see what I got to say, and then you can tell me what you think.
It's not a heavy lift. Because I've already got a lot.
He's married.
I'm married.
I only do heavy lifts. I mean, I don't, I mean, I spent about 40 hours a week last time on the airport when I took it. What I want to focus, my main priority right now is the economic development. And I'd like to create a liaison position with our economic development team in more open communication, more knowledge about what we're doing to create opportunities for businesses to understand what we can offer them as a community to open in and just getting businesses. I'm meeting with a potential business this week that I'm very optimistic that I can get them to agree with interest, it's going to downtown, and hopefully talk with our economic development team and Origin and Carmel about taking a commercial space, not just another person and filling a live work, which seems to me to be a little counterintuitive to what we initially wanted for the downtown core. So that's one thing I definitely want to do as a smaller liaison. Part working with Jill in her office. Number two is, we have another issue with housing in this community that's kind of on the other end of the spectrum, and that's multi-generational housing. We have seniors who live in bigger houses that they can't live in anymore because it's too big. They don't have a main level master. I would love to work with Boulder and the state in getting some sort of a grant or some sliding scale money that they can turn their main floor. You know, everybody's got that living room that nobody ever uses, that they clean. That can be turned into a main floor master. Couples that are my age and older, whose children suddenly can move into the house and take care of them. And then when they have children, their children can be watched by the grandparents. The grandparents can be taken care of by the family. And you've just automatically created generational wealth. So when the people who initially bought the Rock Creek property in the 2000s, they pass on, their children take the house. There's economic and there's also tax incentives with that. I think that's one thing our community doesn't have because we do not have ranch planned housing. We do not have main floor masters for people who are getting to an age where they can't go up and down staircase. And they want to stay in our community. You know, the other part of this, we don't have buildable land going forward. I want to see the opportunity for people who were the first people to buy into Rock Creek, stay in that home long-term, let their kids take over the house. And just create what a model that you see back in Boston and New York and Chicago is. Three generations of a family living in the same house. That's an important one for me. The airport is obviously something that is going to continue to be an issue for residents. I would still like to try to make inroads with the flight community, with the aviation community and the flight schools to see what they can do to just in any way, shape, or form mitigate the noise that the residents are experiencing. I don't know how much, okay, I'll do a Mike joke. I don't know how much runway I've got left on that. But I still think there's things that we can do in getting the flight schools to understand that certain actions or certain curbing of things can work. And I know that the airport's kicked out their new voluntary noise abatement program, which is a little bit more comprehensive than it was in the past. But I don't think we should just lay back and just wait. I think we should keep pushing them to keep, you know, if you can turn before the town to pull the weather, do that. If you can go in the other direction, do that. Whatever we can do to help our residents and that. It's still an important thing with a lot of people. And I just don't want to see that drop. Or the typical answer is like, what are you guys doing? Oh, well, we're in litigation. That doesn't seem to be sufficient when someone asks us what we're doing. So I'd much rather be working on that as well. So those are the three things. And then the fourth thing, I think trustee Hamerly did a fantastic job with the seniors. I would like to kind of work with Parks and with Leslie and Michaela and create more programming for the seniors. Maybe not just the breakfast here and there. Maybe have a band session, a dance session, they can learn different dances. Maybe we can do a casino night where they can kind of, you know, it's an excuse to dress up and have fun and have a good time and just hang out with people who are in your generation and just really enjoy the facets that the town can provide them. So that said, Mark, what do you think? You still want me to take your...
I think you should take CMO Policy Committee.
I don't want to take it, I feel bad.
I think it's up for grabs. It's up for grabs. I put it in blue, which means it's up for grabs.
It's pretty low lift.
Anyway, Stephanie, Heather?
I think most everything I had on my list has already been mentioned. Neil touched on this, I want to make sure we don't lose sight of it. Number one is spending tax money that we received on everything we promised residents. That's kind of my number one. Not related, but something I do want to keep in mind. We had gone through a bit of an exercise where we looked at staffing and seeing where do we need more, where we could potentially reallocate. If there's areas that have more than enough, I would venture to say that's probably not the case. But I want to make sure that we are staffed adequately so that nobody is overburdened. And then I also want us to look at some forward planning for next year and beyond per staff space. And the larger picture there is budgeting and what we're spending right now on rent. So that's more of a next year discussion. But because it's forward planning, I want to keep it on our radar as we're looking at budgeting for both staff and space.
And public safety for that, too.
And public safety. Because we know that's going to be coming up in about a year or two. That's all that's going to need more help. So keeping an eye on that.
Heather?
You might have just hit on my last few when I recalled efficiencies, the staff and office space. Recovery and resiliency, can't speak, sorry. Fire, still keeping that top of mind and what that looks like moving forward as we kind of evolve. But there's still a lot of people in the unknown. Home role, which I think is moving forward, but making sure staff's supported in that. And anything we can do to help as a board. And I think everything else is covered. My number one was economic development and what that looks like.
I'll just add more, ask a more overarching question. Between the town board goals, which I think are really good goals, and some of the priorities we've talked about tonight, how do we measure success? Is it getting the XBS open? Is that success? Or is it opening, is it filling all the storefronts on Main Street? Is that success? So I don't know when and how we have that conversation. But I think it would be important for us to have that conversation. So again, messaging to our community, these are the five or six core service areas. These are the priorities for each. And this is how we're going to measure what success looks like. So again, I don't know if that's a work session, if that's...
I think there's certain of these goals and priorities that are easily measurable. And like, okay, whether or not we fix Rock Creek Parkway or pay the alleys in the original town or redid North Pool, you know, like, those are specific projects that are going to be funded from like the sales tax. So like, okay, like, there's your infrastructure. Like, I think on the infrastructure side of things, it's pretty easy to like identify these are the things we want to focus on.
Like economic development.
Yeah, I mean, economic development is a constant evolving issue that, you know, there are so many things that are like outside of our control. Like, we can't force somebody to build something specifically like, you know, like Biggs B's or the Life Sciences Project when they're looking at like interest rates. And like, if the interest rates are too high, then they can't get funding. So but I mean, I think that there are certain things that we can do to continue to talk to them and make sure that they're getting supported from us. So I think continuing the conversation with the developer, with the owner of those properties, of where are you? What can we do if there's any incentives for the town to offer? But just, I think, having staff know collectively that economic development is a major priority for the town. And we want to do everything that we can so this town is successful is basically what we need to communicate. And then we need to be constantly kind of checking in with all of the various layers to see. And that's why we've got Jill on staff.
I really like Jason's idea of having a trustee liaise with, like, so that there is some, like, there's a constant contact and somebody who's going to be, whether it's Jason or whoever it is. But I often, I feel like I wish I had more or measures of like what those increments are and what is happening. And maybe it's just sometimes there's nothing. And so there isn't anything to like report out. But I would like to see more interaction with the trustee and the economic development side of things. I don't know what that looks like, but...
Well, I mean, I think we can certainly have Jill present at board meetings. She has them pass, and we can make it more regular and include that in like digests.
I'm thinking we have more. It's got to be...
That's not enough.
Yeah, I want to be able to go with Jill when she introduces herself to these businesses, talks in about what we can offer the town. I mean, I live in this town, you know, Jen lives in this town. I want them to know just how amazing and wonderful it is and what we can do to help them move here. I mean, maybe I've been, I don't know what's the right word for it. Maybe I go off on tangents of my own. But if I see a sentence or something, I'll go after it. And I figure if there's some success to be gained from that, I'm going to be relentless. And I'm not going to stop. And I see the economic development in Main Street kind of slipping away a little bit. And I don't want that to happen. I don't want more live work to happen. I don't want residential to be the thing that takes over the town. I think we can do it. I think we can get really good quality businesses in here. I think we can get what we need. And I'm willing to put in the time of the day to go after that. And by working with Jill rather than just going solo on it, I think that'd be much, much stronger economic development possibilities for us. So that's kind of what I'm looking at with that, is working with her. Not working against her, but utilizing my talents as a person who can market, who can get clients. If I can get a client, I can get a business. So that's kind of how I'm looking at it.
I think, you know, especially speaking from a sales standpoint, if you go out as a team, and I'll tell you in our business, that's what we do. I'm not going out on a sales call alone. I go with my team and I say, you know, this is so-and-so, and this is what they do, and this is what I do, and this is what this person does. And it just shows that you're being well taken care of, that there's multiple people that are rooting for you and wanting you in the town. So I don't think it's, you know, I think, you know, hearing from Jill on a regular basis is fantastic, and it's not so much oversight, it's just support. And I think any businesses coming in, if they see that support, I mean, if I were a business and I've got a member of the town board coming with the economic development manager and somebody from Carmel or whoever else, I'm going to feel very supported and feel like they really want me in town as opposed to one, two people going. So I like that idea. I just, speaking for myself in sales, it works very well. And we've heard that from several clients, that they appreciate that support, that they have more than one face and more than one contact. So I think it would be a win.
I was going to say, Jen, I agree with you. Where it gets really tricky is a lot of these conversations at the conferences of like, well, we'll come if you give us money. And because you're on the board, you're in a very awkward position of having a promise, but not, potentially not being able to...
Sure, sure.
One of the biggest issues we all have is that Carmel built crappy buildings. And every tenant needs to spend $100,000 just to finish the construction of the building. Right? Because we let that happen. Right? And now Carmel is trying to look at us to plug that hole. Right? So we could bring more businesses in here, but it's going to take money out of the board. And you would be in a very awkward position of having to say that. And this is where, you know, Jill works for Matt. So they can make the sort of soft promise, like, hey, maybe the board can deliver this. I mean, I don't disagree, a team works. The issue is who's making the ultimate decision. And, you know, because you're one of seven, and you can't promise what you can't deliver.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the fundamental hard part we all have in trying to deliver on what Carmel poorly built. And I don't know what the right answer is, because I've been here for eight years, a million. And we have not been able to get over the hump. Because the businesses come over here, we've had, I don't know how many people take a look at the site and be like, yeah, the rent's too high, I can't afford the TI. We can't plug that hole.
That's the, I guess that's to my point, is I don't necessarily need a trustee to like, I don't intend to step on any toes or like move any authorities around between, you know, who, how it's lined up. But I feel like we need to do something different than we've been doing. And so whatever that is, whether it's like a liaison that's more involved or more engagement, and like, I don't want Jill spending all her time coming to just present over and over the same information. Because that's like, I would not want to have to do that. And so whatever the balance is between like respecting her role and the work that she's doing, but also pull some other lever. Because going into the next year and continuing to do exactly the same thing doesn't feel like we're putting more, we all said economic development. So I just like to see something else. And I don't have the answer for what that is. And your point is great on the like risk or concern or awkward position of putting any of us in. any of us in, but I don't, I didn't want to see something else or more somehow.
So here's my suggestion. I think that this is, this is good that, that we're thinking about these things. And basically what, what I'm hearing is what I think we could benefit from, just like we're going to be doing on the budget side of things, is you know, kind of like a comprehensive review of like, what are we currently doing from an economic development perspective? What are the tools that are currently in the toolkit? And then what are the tools that aren't in the toolkit that should be in the toolkit that we could, you know, equip Jill and others on a going forward basis? Like what are the challenges that we can solve? What are the challenges that are completely out of our control? You know, we're just dealing with interest rates and just kind of market conditions that are statewide or countrywide, whatever. But I think as a starting point, just like we're doing with the budget, having a work session topic kind of addressed to economic development, what are we doing? What should we be doing? What are other communities doing that we're not doing? You know, like one of the things that we talked about a couple of years ago was, you know, we had very little that we were offering in terms of incentives and, you know, we had our neighbors that were throwing money around...
Trucks full of cash.
Yeah. And guess what? They were getting like all of these businesses to come in and invest in their community. And just like you, you have to play that game if you, if you want to compete, right? So, you know, but I think having that conversation at a work session is probably the starting point for it because I think we need to be thoughtful about it and strategic. But I think it's a very important goal.
Can I circle back for a moment to what Mike had mentioned, just because I think it's a really good point and I would like to maybe explore that in the first work session next year is all these goals, you know, it's great to have a goal, but if you don't have a plan behind it or it's, you know, I love SMART goals, so everybody pretty much knows what those are, but you know, to have them be achievable and relevant and time bound specifically and measurable. So if we could maybe discuss in March, you know, these are overarching goals and then how do we measure success and what is the time limit? Is it next year or is it, you know, a five-year plan? I mean, I like goals, I'm very goal oriented, but I want to make sure that we're tracking that in a SMART way. So I don't want to decide at that point because I thought that was really good.
And we can use the sustainability dashboard as a model for how information gets displayed and shared.
Agreed. All right. Anything else in terms of priorities? I think we've got, we've got some good, a lot of shared interests here and then, you know, a couple kind of big ones that deserve, you know, work, work session agenda topics where we can kind of work through the specifics.
Going back to one that Heather mentioned, and I think we've talked about it, but it may not hurt to at least have a staff update on where we're at with Marshall Fire Recovery. Like I think we all have anecdotes, we kind of know where we're at with the rebuild, but just, this isn't like a formal, you know, presentation, but just like, and again, like I don't want to burden staff with just like another report out, but it'd be good to know. I mean, we, we see the dashboard, you know, where are we stuck?
I think too, just understanding like some, like decisions have been made for some folks that they're, they're just not going to and if we know that, then we can stop sharing them like...
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think right now it's just like we're at this much percent and with the assumption of 100% and we aren't, it's not going to be 100%. So like, how do we speak to that? I found myself in that situation a lot over the last few weeks in different places and I don't want to give bad information, but I was just kind of winging it with what I thought and what anecdotally I knew and so it'd be helpful to know more.
Well, you know, I mean, it's, it's a good point because what, last year when we were talking about, we were coming up, we were having this conversation with the board, we were talking about like, when are we, when is the recovery complete, right? Like, and, you know, I think, I think Bob said at that time, like, well, whenever he's back home, you know, it was just like, okay, like that, that makes sense, like in theory, but there are those circumstances where some people are just like, you know, we're going to own this land and it's going to just sit undeveloped for the foreseeable future.
So technically that's done, like that's, I mean, the, the decision has been made.
The original owner is not rebuilding.
Right.
And we can support the next...
Yeah, I mean, at some point, the market's going to do what the market's going to do, but like, is that in five years? Is that in 10 years? I don't know. But it, it helps the, the board and then staff dedicate resources accordingly.
How long until they start paying undeveloped land taxes?
Oh, it's already, it's already...
It happened last year.
That's, that's going to be a massive incentive for people because once you were paying a small amount, now you're paying $15,000 per lot in taxes, that's going to be motivated for a lot of people, whether they're built back or not.
Is there a limits, a limit on, sorry to ask this to everybody in the room, but is there a limit on work sessions? Like can they only be quarterly?
Two weeks.
No, no, no. I just, I just feel like some of these things, I don't want to wait for another whole quarter to talk about and then wait another whole quarter to possibly do something about it and next thing you know, we're going into it.
We've got, we've got the regularly scheduled ones, but we can schedule whatever we want.
Not asking for it yet.
For example, we're scheduling a meeting on Friday in case...
This Friday?
This Friday. We are, it's going to be a Zoom meeting.
A special meeting.
We're, it's going to be a Zoom meeting, so.
It's a past.
It's a past.
I'm not joking, we're, we're having a meeting on Friday.
Are you kidding?
No, come on, really?
We're having a meeting on Friday.
Where?
It's going to be on Zoom.
The cloud.
What time?
That has, we'll probably do, maybe do a Google poll. We're going to be having a special meeting at the town council to pass an ordinance related to our sales tax, which we just passed as an emergency ordinance and I can talk to you offline as to why we're doing this.
Okay, cool. That's what I want to do Friday night.
It's not going to be at night. It'll be during the day, it'll be about a half hour, it'll be remote, but anyway, we're, we're holding meetings because we need to. So I think we've got our board priorities. You got good direction there? All right, last topic for discussion on the agenda is 2E, which is our discussion of capital improvement project, priorities for our bond proceeds.
Thank you for hanging out.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
So, um, we've got Jeff, Leslie and Brandon here. Jeff's here to answer any questions with regard to bond proceeds that he's working on currently. But I'm going to have Brandon and Leslie just walk through, you thought it'd be good to provide recommendations for the projects, just as a starting point, but you know, we'll take your direction with the project next, next year and future years, so. But Brandon, why don't you start something with your projects?
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
So for roadway projects, there's a couple we've on the list. So for 2025, there was two we're recommending, Rock Creek Parkway from Indiana to 88th Street, which we discussed at the meeting on Monday, last Monday, for the design of that. So we put in $4 million, but obviously depending on if we're doing a deep mill and overlay or reconstruct, that could vary or round it out versus traffic signal. That's what the designs were. So that number can move up or down. We did have 2.4 million in the budget in 2027 for that project, so that would free that money up for additional CIP projects in the future. The second project we had in there was Fifth Avenue construction and that would include both Westway Street and Charles Street that connect in those two alleys. So we're estimating that'd be about 1.2 million. We're also recommending that for 2025, this coming year.
Just real quick, on the road projects, one of the things we discussed, by doing the deep mill and overlay, we can do it at a lower cost, we can do more projects. So that was our thought there.
Yeah, and the other thing that didn't come up to me, money's, I mean, payment preservation, there's a lot of new technologies out there, like we tried Redwood Night this year, so there's things we're looking at to extend the life of payment once we get it refreshed. So I think that'll be a priority too, to make our dollars go further. So while a deep mill and overlay may not have the life expectancy of a reconstruct, we can do things to extend that life expectancy that basically brings that PCI back up. Original Town Alley Paving, that's the third one on the list. So we have, I took out the two alleys that'd be done with Fifth Avenue and after that there would be eight alleys remaining because we're doing two this year that was just approved on Monday. So we had those spread out 2026 to 2028 and I sent a memo out in the weekly digest and if y'all looked at that, so phasing that out early coming years. And then future years, looking at finishing Rock Creek from Honey Creek to Colton, we did have some money in the budget for 2029, not enough to do that project, the sub dollars there, recommending that in 2026. And we have Indiana Street, so we've done Indiana Street up to West Torres and we've also done that piece next to the castle, but the rest is in pretty bad shape. So looking to do that section of roadway, we have that penciled in for 2027. And then roadway rehab, Rock Creek South to Colton, we had about 1.5 million budgeted in 28 and 29, but that would just start touching those roads. There's about another 2.2 we need to do to finish that section. So that was 27 and 29. So those were the roadway projects and recommendations by year.
Hey, Brandon, I'm sure this is on me and I'm missing it, but where is 88 to Honey Creek? Are we not doing anything with that or is that one...
Ernie did it. Did it? That was about five to six years, 2017, I think.
And we did a full reconstruction on that section.
Yeah, that section's good.
It's the once new section, so it probably doesn't stand out. You're like, what happened? Why's my car not running?
What's the condition on Honey Creek to Colton?
It's...
It's rough.
It is, I want to say it's about a 37 or 41 in that range. It's rough.
Brandon, I've got a question. I mean, you know, and this is, you know, so on our first Friday conversation, we had a resident, actually, the, one of the HOA members of the rich, right? You know, and they're wondering why they're on the hook for their own parking lot, which is going to potentially bankrupt the 45 membered community. And I think about that and I obviously know some of the history here where, you know, the developer comes to us and says, we'll make these private roads and we'll take care of them, they walk away and the HOA's want it to fund it. They, but then we've got Fifth Avenue on here and we're going to cover that for this part of town, right? Because it wasn't planned development and it didn't get handed over to the town. And I look at 1.2 million dollars for like literally 200 feet of roadway versus like 1.9 million for Indiana Street and I can't wrap my head around like the magnitude of these numbers for the number of cars going over them, right? I mean, it'll take six years for the number of cars on Fifth Avenue to match like three days on Indiana, right? Like why are these numbers like just so big for these alleys?
Yeah, the big, the big thing for Fifth Avenue is just, it's a full build of a roadway. So really you're building it from the surface, I mean, from the bottom up, you're doing curb and gutter, possibly a sidewalk on one side of the road and then Williams Street Charles. I think Fifth Avenue is about almost 900 feet total and then you add in West William and Charles, but it's the curb and gutter, it's the concrete work, it's the drainage. Because once you put curb and gutter, it's got to drain somewhere, so that's why that's driving that so much higher. I mean, I don't disagree with you if you look at cost per vehicle mile.
Yeah, I mean, cost per car on, you know, car using it versus, you know, benefits to the, you know, to the aggregate community. I mean, I think about these, this is just me pontificating, I think about the fact that, you know, we had, this was a tax floated by the entire community and how do we make sure that the most people in the community benefit? You know, I would personally send the dollars to the greatest return on that investment, you know, Indiana, Rock Creek, and we'll spend all the money at that point, you know, and over time we'll have funds for alleyways, but I hate prioritizing the alleyways. I know they're important, but I hate prioritizing them through the bond funds. I mean, granted, when we move things around, the, the funds make them up, but you know, when I saw that number for Fifth Avenue, my jaw dropped because Promenade, you know, which was, you know, about a mile, was a million dollars from scratch. And granted, that was 2020, things are more expensive.
Yeah, and I think some of these, you know, based on board direction and discussion, we can pull out of the bond funds if you want and look to try to pay for them through the CIP.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's the way I look, when I look at all of these proposals, I'm kind of similarly aligned to, you know, biggest banning for your buck and the most number of residents kind of like impacted and making sure that, you know, what we're, what we're paying out of, you know, these bonds that we're, we're funding by the sales tax is consistent with what was like sold to the voters, right? And so like, you know, we told them all the time, we've said, roads, you know, parks, roads, parks, playgrounds and schools. So...
Yeah, three Ps.
Yeah, parks, playgrounds, schools. Roads, parks, playgrounds, schools. So I, I, I think we should do Fifth Ave. I also want to do the original town alleys, but I think those should be kind of CIP discussions versus bond proceed discussions. So like, I like the idea of, I'm 100% on board with Rock Creek Parkway. And then, you know, frankly, I think then like the rest of it is like, start to look at rules and like the rest of it is kind of future expenses coming out of the CIP budget, which may be moved forward because now...
The funds are available.
Those funds are, are now available. Like I think Indiana is definitely, should be on the table because that's, that's enriching.
It helps because everyone has to go slow around the school though.
Then Leslie, you want to go over your projects from the...
Sure. First one we have on here is a design and construction of North Pool. Looking at doing that 25, 26, this price tag and the discussion of what we're targeting was based on that cost perspective that we did. This is not the lowest cost replacing like, would like just one step above that. So actually adding some improvements to the pool and some more functionality. Obviously, as we do public engagement, that scope will be fine tuned, so. That's the first one. Design a South Pool is the second one we put on there for 2025, potentially some cost savings doing those, if not at the same time and one right behind the other.
We don't have construction for South Pool on this list?
It is not on this list at this time.
Right out of my mark.
Yeah, that's what we ran up against a little bit.
So we would...
I think that that's a process.
Well, our special was, when we were going through these recommendations was seeing if we could find a way to pay for the South Pool construction out of the CIP, we'd have to take a look, but, you know, these are just our recommendations, so.
All right, keep going.
Community center, structural drainage and parking. This is to take care of some structural issues with the building that we had investigated actually last year. We haven't had the funding to actually get in there and do the work, however, it is critical to maintaining that building and kind of safeguarding our investment in that building. It does include some pretty significant structural supports underneath the building and then repair of, of the cracking and settling that we've had to this point, both internally and externally to the building. And then addressing the drainage problem, which has contributed greatly to that structural If any of you've been there during the winter time, when it, we get the, the ice from the water running over the parking lot, you can tell that we get a lot of drainage off that hill and it does come right down into the parking lot and is concentrated around that building. So this would address those issues. In addition to that, we've had some suggestions that we add some ADA parking on the east side of the building. Currently, the ADA parking is all on the west side and it's a pretty long route, so some minor improvements to allow for that. And of course, then we'd have to repair the, the asphalt or scenery stripe. That's that project.
Leslie, out of curiosity, the 2.3, it'd be good to kind of understand what's the mission critical versus incremental benefits, you know, because stuff that we have to do, we have to do, right? It's just a matter of can we peel off a little piece of the 2.3 and throw it into a different project or is this all like have to do these things to salvage the building?
In the opinion of the engineers, there's no sense in, in doing the structural work for not going to solve the drainage problem. It'll return in three, four, five years.
Future board's problem.
Yeah. No, you know, the, the improvements to the parking lot, I don't think are...
Well, the improvements to the parking lot, the ones I hear about the most because the ADA parking is on the wrong side.
Yeah.
That's, that's on the board. We made that decision five years ago.
Moving on, hitting playgrounds, Community Park Playground is probably the one playground that we... Moving on, hitting playgrounds, Community Park Playground is probably the one playground that we get the most feedback on. It's also our one playground that is absolutely not really accessible due to the pea gravel in the playground pits. It's also one of our largest playgrounds, so replacing that is going to be pricey. Even at this cost, we're probably looking at shrinking that footprint to some degree. It's poor in place, rubberized surfacing is very expensive, and there's a lot of extra space in those playground areas. So redesigning that, at a minimum, we're looking at one and a quarter million to do that. It doesn't make sense to replace just the surface or just the equipment. You have to do both. We might as well add shade while we're at it.
That's no question.
We could
Hotter than the 80s at that park.
We could do one area. So we could focus on one of those playground pits only at a time. That is an option here. And I didn't provide pricing on that. We could get that.
We get a mobilization base account if we do both?
I mean, certainly, doing everything at once has a lot of cost savings, not only in public engagement, but yeah, mobilization, sourcing the equipment is one of the longest timelines we have out there. Playground equipment is pretty much built to order. So yeah, stretching it out has a lot of disadvantages as well. Continuing on the, the subject of playgrounds, we have several older playgrounds, the smaller ones in the neighborhoods that are in need of, of replacement of equipment, bring them up to code, up to ADA standards, and to get rid of the engineered wood fiber that we have and replace that with the poor in place. So looking at those and maybe doing one a year over time. But starting that process, you know, between 26 and 28.
For the ADA compliance, is there a timeframe in which we have to be compliant or is it just?
We, we must have a plan and an intent. The, the wood fiber surfacing does qualify for ADA compliance. It's not great, but it does comply. Most of our playgrounds have at least one component that is accessible.
So we're not out of compliance?
We're not 100% out of compliance, but it's, we're pretty low on the spectrum on some of these just because of their age. The wood fiber surface also is just not ideal from a wildfire resiliency standpoint, so.
And pea gravel doesn't qualify for ADA compliance, right?
100% not.
So it's
Yeah, it's like quick sand.
I just wanted, so everyone's clear, right?
My chair, you're stuck.
You can go with the wood fiber, you increase the fire risk, but you know, the better place to go is what we've been doing with all our parks is the poor in place.
It, it's like four times more expensive than the wood, but it is so much more beneficial and enjoyable. And first thing the kids do when they get in those playgrounds is they kick their shoes off and start running around, so.
What's the life expectancy of that poor in place rubber versus?
Wood chips?
Wood chips.
A, a lot of it depends on the maintenance and care, so keeping it clean. It can range from 10, 15, 20 years. For example, the Miners Park Playground where we put a sand pit in there, that sand is already infiltrating and degrading that rubberized surface. So keeping it clean and brushed off as much as possible will help us reach into that 15, 20 year period.
And our first, our first poor in place was that Purple Park?
We've done some small sections, but that was the biggest one that, that, yes.
Yeah, because the reason I ask is after we did that, it was nothing but like, this is the most amazing park ever, feedback. So we need to keep doing that with this.
And, and if you go to any of the Sagamores or Children's Park, you find shoes there. Like, I don't know how the kids are always shoes, left, be not electric skaters.
So I appreciate staff suggestions here, so thank you for putting these together. My, my general thought with what's being proposed here is I think that, at least with the parks and playgrounds category, I think the community center repairs should not be paid out of the bond proceeds because that was not something that was ever discussed from the voters when we went to them and asked them for sales tax. So I think it's work that needs to be done and we pay for it in the ordinary budgeting of our CIP fund, but we do not pay for it out of the bond proceeds. So my, my thinking on kind of what, what's been discussed right now is kind of similar to what Neil was saying in terms of like biggest bang for the buck. So like on roads, Rock Creek Parkway, from, you know, Indiana 88th, the castle is already in the budget. I think focusing on kind of the, the bigger options of like Indiana reconstruction, the Honey Creek to Colton, kind of those large, highly traveled roads makes sense. I'm in favor of moving forward with the North Pool construction. I'd like to see us do the South Pool design and construction as well, and then on the parks and playgrounds. Supportive of Community Park getting money, playgrounds getting money. But I would pull out the Fifth Ave and original town alleys and just put that into our capital improvement plan. So I, I don't want to not do these projects. I just think we just budget for them separately. Same thing with the South Rock Creek Road reconstruction that needs to happen, should just be paid for out of the, the regular CIP plan and then community center CIP funds. That's, that's kind of where I, I think people are going to be really pissed off if we spend two and a half million dollars on the community center and they don't get a South Pool.
Yeah, I, I'm right there with you as well. I mean, it was, you know, back, I did the, you know, CBS segment, that community park. So if we don't do community parks, we're going to have some people to answer to. So community park is super high on my list because A, it's hotter than 80s in the summer, and B, the rubber and plastic is broken. It has been for a while. So it is like one of our oldest parks, so it's a no brainer. Rock Creek's a no brainer, at least the upper half of Rock Creek, Indiana and the North Pool, and as much as we can get forward on South Pool. At that point, you know, I don't know how much money is actually coming in from the bond because I think I overspent it already. And whatever doesn't come out of the bond, we just fast forward on the CIP with all the cash that we freed up through the bond. That's my thinking.
I just want to make sure we're not penny wise and top foolish on the community center because if that
No, it's not, it's not a matter of not doing it. It's just not from the bond funds.
Yeah.
Use the CIP funds to get there because
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that the foundation thing is such a critical thing. You give it five years, we get a manager to come back and say, you got to pump the building. Really? I mean, I've seen this before. This is, we need to fix this part of it. I mean, there's all these other things to be fixed that are in the line, but this is a massive thing we have to figure out.
That was my concern, and I agree with it not coming out of the bond. I think that's the right thing to do. But I also, Jeff, I don't know if you know this, I'm hanging on, so don't want to jump the fun. If you don't have any answer, you can follow up. But I would want to make sure we have funds to at least address the structural and drainage issues at the community center in 2026 because I am equally concerned that if we kick the can on that, we're going to end up spending a whole lot more or having a major issue on our hands, so.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to do it with money coming out that is in the CIP fund that's moving into the new CIP fund. We should be able to free that up to do that 1.2 in 2026.
Okay.
1.2 or 2.3?
1.2.
1.3.
1.2.
Oh, I thought that's
I thought it was 2.3.
It's 2.3 for the community center. That's one my jaw dropped.
Where's 2.4?
It's on the PDF that's in the packet.
Those were everything. Just the drainage is 1.3, right? Yeah, the memo has 1.3, but the attachment is 2.3.
I don't want to leave the attachment.
That's right.
Hey, we found a million dollars.
Good job.
I still don't want it coming out of the bonds.
Right.
All right, that's consistent because you, and we talked about a million and a 2.3, Eli is trying to find a way to sort of parse this out.
All right, so it's 1.3?
1.3.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All right, minor detail.
Bank error in your favor.
Bank error in your favor.
Okay. So, I mean, hopefully, you know, from a CIP planning perspective, this makes at least that job somewhat easier because it frees up things that we budgeted for in '25, '26, '27, and now all of a sudden are funded through the bonds. And then the math's a little easier. Right? Others? Thoughts?
And
I agree.
Ditto.
All right.
Jeff, can we get an update kind of on what's the process now?
So yeah, I talked, talked to the financial advisor, yeah, financial advisor today. The board will have to pass a parameters ordinance authorizing us to go out for bonds and to the issue of the debt. And then we have to watch and work around our audit. So what they said today is we probably will issue, we'd be able to issue in June. But before that, what we can do is we can do what we did with the community center
Sure.
and do a resolution saying, hey, we'll reimburse ourselves for this. So that's kind of what the thought process is right now because we'll have to work with the FAA to get a RFP out for selection and all that stuff. So they're saying, you know, 150 days type of thing, so five to six months.
So we're advancing the money so we can get the RFPs on the street and the team can get ready to go? And then issue the bond in June and, okay.
Yeah.
Taking our saves.
Yeah, I mean, for, we pay our saving, pay us back.
And this is for specifically the pool, like after this year's season?
Yes.
So in the fall to enter next?
The construction would start at the end of the season in 2025.
Dogs in the pool.
The design, public engagement, all that would happen as soon as we can.
So just for, for our, like, expert on when we should expect to see, like, the, the contract for Rock Creek Parkway to actually kind of authorize construction and all that, like the, the actual design and then awarding, awarding the bid? That would be like April? May?
I think that I think the public outreach piece is a big one. So we're hoping to finish that in February and then we got to start design. Well, design from 30 to 100 after that would be the goal. So we've done survey already because we expedited that. Now we spent initiatives and we got to kick off meeting tomorrow, actually, with the consultant. So our goal is to start, get the board's approval in late February, early March to say yes, move forward with a roundabout or a traffic signal or nothing, leave it as is, based on the feedback from the public. Finish design and then bid. My, my initial gut was June is when we'd be letting a contract, June, July.
Okay. And then with the pools?
February, March.
I mean, because we're, we haven't even begun doing the public outreach or engaging any design, we're probably looking at best case scenario, end of August, beginning of September.
So construction?
Yep.
What about when we actually are considering the design and awarding the contract?
Probably design in February, contract. We're going to have a long engagement period with that design consultant probably, so.
What's the thinking on the engagement, the community engagement?
We have some user groups we know we want to reach out to specifically. We've talked about an open house kind of situation.
That worked great with the community center.
You know, we've, we've done some public input through advisory committees, but this seems a little bit too big for that. So I think the open house
Yeah, I think that, I mean
You know, and, and we can consider a survey. Or I think our public is starting to get a little survey fatigue out there. We can do a survey as part of the open house situation and maybe if people can attend that, they can fill out some kind of feedback.
Yeah, I felt like Oz did a great job with the Land Rover building, the charrettes and everything else to just get the feedback on site. And I think they're able to distill it into something the board could act on pretty easily. I think people walking through the space, it's just so much easier to, to have a conversation or visualize what we change.
It might be a little hard to do that based on the, the time of the year, but we can, you know, we can take people virtually.
I think, I think, you know, surveys are, are fine, but, you know, I feel like you get every opinion. This is great, this is terrible, and like, how much of that is actually like, this is really going to help me make a decision one way or the other. But like, what, what, what I'm hoping for with like input on Rock Creek Parkway and like whether or not you have a roundabout, like for the people who are driving it every single day, who like come out of your neighborhood and go to Monarch, like what does a left turn like look like at 8:00 AM when we're trying to get to Monarch? Like, for the pedestrians who are crossing in, like, I, I want those people coming to the meeting or sending us an email. Like, I don't need necessarily a survey. It's almost like their opinion gets like lost in the morass of all the survey data. Like, it's more valuable, I think, for them to like come to the meeting, send us an email, like, get that input in. And similarly, like with the, with the pool design, like, you know, I want to know, like, what do the flyers need? Because they actually like use the locker rooms and like, you know, those sorts of things. And like, what, what are the tennis users, you know, who would really like to have bathrooms around?
Kids really want to give their opinion on it.
Yeah.
Like, they do.
That's true.
They really do. The kids do. And then obviously not the whole project, but if there's like some this or that, or this or that, like that, that could be an opportunity to like engage with them in the community that way and give them some voice in this. That's a lot, you know, to like ask, but they're already talking about it. They're all like, when I'm with the like eight to 10 year olds, they're like, that's, they, they've already heard about that. I'm like, how are you guys talking about the pool? But they are. And it might be an opportunity to introduce local government to them and turn it into like a whole fun thing for an hour one day at the school or something. I don't know.
That's a great idea. I mean, some of the fun amenities that you can add to a pool are not the high priced items.
Right, right.
I mean, they're, they're, you know, the add-ons that the kids really enjoy. And that make the facility attractive, so they're not the mechanical or structural or safety components.
What kind of filtration system? Like skimmers?
You never know with these kids, it's fairer though.
Yeah, I mean, we got really good feedback from Silk on the community center, like the spot. They kind of gave us some really good feedback sessions specifically. And I think, you know, these are the kids that grew up in these pools. Most of them have aged out, but at the same time, they know what they liked and didn't like.
But like the flyers, the flyers, like they, they're there like every day during the summer. And like, they know like, this is how much space we need to store our diving equipment and like the, the ropes and all the various things that they set up. They're like, this is where they store everything that we bring up for the meet. So they'll have like a specific list of things that they don't want to see go away and things that they would like to see added.
And I, and I think they need a one-on-one with our design consultant specifically. They've provided us with some input ahead of time to kind of get to where we are today, but that was preliminary. So take a much deeper dive into that.
So kind of go back on the bonds, talking to them today. We talked, you know, last year or earlier this year about coverage and just pledging our new 0.315 like we do the open space. With that, we'd have to have about 1.25 coverage or, you know, one and a quarter times. That would give us about $16.7 million or $16.5 million worth of, you know, project fund money.
Gross cash.
What's that?
Gross cash, effectively.
Yeah, now if they, if we wanted
Not today's rates?
That's today's rates. Yeah. Now, we wanted to do
Next summer is going to be a whole different
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's going to be wait to go to the market, right?
We could get a higher rating, which would lower our interest rates. But by doing that, you have to go to 1.5 coverage. So then we'd only get about $14.2 million worth of proceeds upfront that would free up more money year after year on top of the bonds payments. You know, but we wouldn't, we'd lose, you know, $2.3 million of upfront money, but we'd have a lower interest rate by about 25 to 50 basis points. And in this model, we're at, you know, 0.35% lower interest rate by doing that.
Well, that saves us over like 30 years.
We're doing 20 here.
20, if that saves us over 20 years.
What did I do with that number? About $1.5 million worth of interest.
So we lose 2.3 to save 1.5.
Correct.
And I'm all about maximizing. And I'm all about maximizing cash now because the future board may just say, let's pay it off early with the extra cash.
Take the 2.3.
And you know, we have additional debt obligations that we're going to be retiring in the next couple of years. Or did we just retire all?
Not for CIP. This will be completely new. We've got one of the opens, or yeah, open space and then SMD1 are coming off with the new open space starts going. So we really don't want anything that's going to free up general fund money.
Well, if anybody's still listening to this out there, thank you. We would have had a very different conversation about 26% pass, so this is hugely.
There's not anyone listening.
No, but I'm, I'm really excited that we're, we're moving forward with things.
They won't delay.
Quickly and, you know, kind of like precisely to what we asked the voters to authorize, right? And so, and, and the idea that we're going to like deliver on that within a year or two and like boom, this is.
Renewed faith or whatever.
Government can work.
No, I, I think, I think it's going to be great.
Yeah, so thank you to staff for all the lists, but to all of you who ditched the bond, is on full support too, but the reminder that that's what we promised is appreciated.
All right. Anything further on the bond proceeds? You got direction on that?
Yes, thank you.
All right. We're onto our other items section of the work session. Is there anything else that we would like to discuss?
Oh, there wasn't other items?
There's no memo associated with that.
We could have saved a lot of stuff for that other item.
That's the way it works. We're getting in early. All right. No other items. Date for our next work session has been set, subject to calling another one.
Do you want to discuss the time for Friday or are you wanting it offline?
Well, we can discuss it, so you guys are dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know how you guys do it, but maybe you could give us some tips.
So long and short of it is we passed an emergency ordinance, so in addition to passing the sales tax measure, there needs to be an enacting ordinance that basically makes the sales tax go into effect. We passed an emergency ordinance at our last board meeting, which made it go into effect immediately. The council that we have received without getting, going into attorney client privilege stuff, basically discourages enacting a sales tax by virtue of an emergency ordinance. Under our, as a town superior, our ordinance is going to effect in 30 days. Emergency ordinances go into effect immediately. The reason why this needs to be in effect is if our sales tax is not in effect as of January 1st, we can't go to the bond market and we can't collect our sales tax next year. So we've basically got to wait a year.
Oh, my God.
But we just went, so we, we just became home rule.
Can you imagine?
Under our home rule charter, our ordinances go into effect in 10 days. So.
Wow, that's good.
We can call a meeting on Friday.
Publicly?
Pass publicly noticed as our town council under our home rule charter, which will be certified on Thursday and enact a regular ordinance, not an emergency ordinance. So this is basically built on standards. We'll have an emergency ordinance that already did it. Now we'll have a regular ordinance that will go into effect within 10 days by January 1st where our sales tax can get started, get collected, we can go to the bonding markets, no problem. Hence the need for, for the meeting. So.
Well, that all worked out.
So we've got an ordinance drafted. We just need to call a meeting of our town council, assuming that our home rule charter election gets certified on Thursday.
Okay. You get to be here for our stuff.
I will be here to do that. So Friday, is there any time on Friday that doesn't work for the group or do we want to do a doodle poll to figure out what's most convenient?
I mean, we know 11 to 2 doesn't work for.
No, I'm sorry, 11:30 to 12:30 is my only obstacle. Other than that, I'm pretty flexible.
I have the military commissioning from 8:00 AM until like 11:00 on Friday morning, so I am not available.
Do 1:00 PM?
Yeah, after 11:00 I'm.
1:00 PM to 1:30?
Works.
I'm good up, I'm free up until nine or 10:00, the rest of the day I'm in Denver chasing clients, so.
It's a Zoom call.
I could do it on my phone, but I might be with a.
Okay.
But we'll have a, do we all, we all have a call.
Well, we need to have a call.
Okay. So you don't, yeah.
Or four.
We don't do Zoom.
Let's, let's.
I'll do my best, I'll do my best.
Let's set it for 1 o'clock. It'll be Zoom only.
If I had a notice for this, I could move it around.
1 o'clock on Friday.
Just right before Christmas, I'm trying to get this.
All right.
So it's 1 o'clock on Friday?
1 o'clock on Friday.
You will get an email with the Zoom invitation.
Cool.
Oh. I have something Friday anyway.
It'll be a quick vote, right?
I was like, I feel like I have something Friday.
Less than a half hour.
It's in there, it just didn't.
It's going to be a special meeting of town council.
Town council.
When do we get to be, that Thursday, we'll become council?
Once.
People, council owners?
It's a process.
Council people?
Yeah, whatever you call.
Council persons.
Council members.
Here's what we're council members.
Let's go big and just go council women. Y'all can just manage that.
Why not? All right. We're determined. All right.